June 19th, meeting of Anaronda County Council is now in session. Please stand for invocation, remain standing for the pledge allegiance. Mr. Fink, you have to come.
Thank you, please bow your heads. Dear Heavenly Father, we ask that you give this council the wisdom and the courage to lead this county. We also ask that you protect all those serving overseas. In your name we pray.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. I would like to take this golden opportunity to introduce myself. My name is John Gross on behalf of myself and staff and, of course, the entire council. But most wanted to be happy for the people of Anaronda County, like to welcome everybody to tonight's meeting, sincerely hope and trust that you all folks have an enjoyable and informative night. And with that being said, Madam Secretary, please read the ethics statement.
The Ethics Commission is asked that I advise you that under certain circumstances, members of the public may qualify as lobbyists when they testify before the county council. If so, the law requires that certain information be filed with the Ethics Commission. The Chairman of the Ethics Commission is asked that those present review the Ethics Commission information in the foyer of these chambers. If there are any questions about lobbying requirements, speakers should contact the Ethics Commission in the Heritage Office complex on Reva Road.
Thank you, Madam Secretary.
Mr. Chairman.
There may be a motion to reconsider Bill 4717. Mr. Fink?
That's my motion. I'd like to make a motion to reconsider 4717.
All right. Madam Secretary, you want to please call the roll on reconsideration of 4717?
Okay, calling on the motion, Mr. Smith.
Oh, we, I'm sorry. Are we voting on reconsidering?
We're voting on the motion to reconsider Bill 47.
At some point, I expect someone will explain what this bill is.
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Smith.
Aye.
Mr. Fink.
Aye.
Mr. Pruski.
Aye.
Mr. Peruca.
Aye.
Mr. Trumbauer.
Aye.
Mr. Walker.
Mr. Grasso.
Hi.
Seven in the affirmative, none in the negative. The motion to reconsider the vote on Bill 4717 is passed.
Okay. Madam Secretary, do you want to read the title of 4717, please?
Love to. Bill Number 4717, An Ordinance Concerning Finance, Taxation, and Budget: Admissions and Amusement Tax Athletic and Recreational Facilities.
Okay. All right. Any more discussion on 4717?
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Trumbauer.
Did any new information or insight come out that we should be aware of, or has someone just decided to change?
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Fink?
This was a bill that last minute I thought had ethics conflict. Talked to the Ethics Commission last week, and they came back and said there was no ethics complaint. So I wanted to go ahead and put my record on, my vote on record.
Okay. Anybody else?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, I also abstain for the very same reasons, and I would like to put my vote on the record as well.
Okay. Boy, aren't we going happy here. Madam Secretary, you want to call the roll on 4717 once again?
Mr. Smith.
Aye.
Mr. Fink.
Aye.
Mr. Pruski.
Nay.
Mr. Peruca.
Aye.
Mr. Trumbauer.
No.
Mr. Walker.
Aye.
Mr. Grasso.
Aye.
Five in the affirmative, two in the negative. Bill Number 4717 is passed.
Okay. All right, and we have Mr. Smith. You want to talk about 3517?
Mr. Chairman, yes. At this time, I withdraw 3517. I did speak with Economic Development and Administration, so they're working on some efforts, and what I don't want to do is have my bill, which is the cyber bill, sort of rub up against what the benefits of what they're trying to do and will take place. And so I'm going to wait to see what happens with that, and we'll go from there. So at this time, though, I will withdraw 3517.
Very good. We're on.
Bill 5517.
Okay, 5517. All right, so withdrawing Administration. We got a reconsideration possibly on 5417. Going once, going twice? With that being said, that's my 95%. Hey, I'm trying, I'm trying. All right, is anyone in the audience who would like to address the council briefly on any subject not on the printed agenda? Please come on down. We ask that you keep your remarks to two minutes. Please state your name and address, and even though I know who you are, Madam, just give it to everybody else.
Good evening, Chairman Grasso. Good evening, council members. My name is Amy Leahy. I live at 712 Monmouth Avenue, Severnham Park, Maryland, and I am here, very briefly, on behalf of the Greater Severnham Park Council, Arnold Preservation Council, Growth Action Network, and BroadNet Council of Communities. We would like to thank the county executive for funding, putting money in the budget for the greater, the, I'm sorry, GDP, General Development Plan. So sorry, I have everything written down, but you know I can't stick to anything I've got written down. So as the county council and the county executive are aware, GSPC and the other organizations that I mentioned are communities, volunteer organizations, where we're dedicated to preserving the quality of life for our member communities, who account for thousands of households in Anaronda County. Resolution 1817, sponsored by Councilmen Smith, Grasso, and Walker, was passed by the county council, requesting to begin the comprehensive review of the 2009 General Development Plan during 2017, and to incorporate citizen participation into the review. The members of the Greater Severnham Park Council would like to thank county executive Steve Schu for including funding in the 2018 budget to begin this process, and we look forward to a citizens advisory group being formed. Thank you for the opportunity to speak.
Okay, and while I got it here, I had a sign-up sheet. So if Ms. Phillips, if you're already here, come on down, and Ms. Burt, come on down also. Take a spot, and anybody else that wants to chime in, come on down. We've got one more seat. Okay, so we'll start off with, I guess we go with, Ms. Phillips?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thanks for coming out.
I have members of the council.
It's a pleasure to be here. My name is Fran Phillips. I'm the acting health officer for Anaronda County, very pleased to join the team with county executive Steve Schu as of June 1st. I am filling in on a temporary basis as Dr. Chan has been called to the state for an assignment at the State Health Department. This is not unfamiliar ground for me. I served as health officer in Anaronda County for 15 years, probably the best 15 years of my life, from 1993 to 2008, after which I made a decision, maybe not the best informed decision, to move to the state and worked as the deputy secretary for public health for the state of Maryland for five years. So it's a pleasure to be back on a temporary basis, and I would like to come before you tonight to talk about what has been front and center for me in my past two weeks in the Health Department, and that is the opioid epidemic that we're confronting as a county. Working very closely, as I said, across all of the cabinet members in the Schu administration to deal with all the aspects of this opioid epidemic. There's two things that I'd like to brief you on that have, I believe, transpired since Dr. Chan spoke to you as the Board of Health last month. One has to do with statistics. There are some new data, some of which you have in the packets that I shared with you in connection with the state's final report. This is the final toxicology report and whatnot from the medical examiner at the state with regard to deaths across the state, every jurisdiction, and what you see there is some of the synopsis of the report for Anaronda County. You can see that we rank among the jurisdictions, third in the state for opioid deaths, number one Baltimore City, number two Baltimore County, number three Anaronda County. The other piece of data that I shared with you, I believe, came up last month at the Board of Health meeting. Someone on the council, and I apologize for not knowing who, but it's a terrific question asked, on a per capita basis, how are Anaronda County residents doing with regard to our opioid deaths compared with other counties? So the other data, the other graph that you have there shows that we are not the worst, we are not the best, we are in the middle. So we're somewhere between Baltimore City and Montgomery County. I'd be happy to share more information with you. The Health Department is working in concert with the Police Department, Fire Department, and everyone else on naloxone distribution, on treatment, and really pulling out all the stops in this epidemic. Thank you.
That kind of always reminds me, you know, when people, you're not the worst, you're not the best, it's kind of like average. You know what my definition? If someone ever calls you average, you swing at them, because you're not, you're a little bit better than the worst, and you're not good enough to be the best.
We can do better. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Trumbauer.
Well, maybe we don't swing at people, because we don't want to promote violence, but I hear what you're saying. Do we have time for a quick question, or do?
Please do.
Okay. Ms. Phillips, thank you for coming out. One, there was a media article recently about Baltimore City and how their supply of Naloxone was running low. Is that a concern that we should be worried about?
We're watching that closely.
We are going to get through this fiscal year, which actually ends in two weeks, with sufficient
supplies of naloxone. Naloxone is Narcan is the brand name, it is the reversal drug for opioids. We have enough in the Health Department to supply to high-risk individuals and their families, and I would like to say right now, if any high-risk person would like to come forward to the Health Department, no questions asked, or family members, 410-222-0117, and we will supply Narcan and the training that goes with it. Secondly, a thing that's happened because of Governor Hogan's signature to some emergency legislation is that anyone can come forward now to a pharmacy, CVS, any pharmacy in the state now will supply naloxone over the counter without a prescription and without a certification for training. So this is a very important new development that we'll get some more information out about.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Walker.
Thank you. Ms. Phillips, just two brief questions for you. I was actually going to reach out to you, and I'll probably go ahead and send you a letter anyway, but there's some, I guess, discrepancy maybe between the warnings that are put out by the Health Department with regards to when people can swim in a river or creek after a rainfall, and I don't know that that's being communicated to the wrecks and parks department in particular, because in my district, there's a couple of places where people can access the water, and my understanding is that there are rangers there, but they're not, you're warning folks from the website that there's a problem swimming in these creeks and waters, but there's no enforcement by the rangers at the parks. So I'm just curious, your thoughts on that, if you have briefly, if you have any, and if not?
Yeah, this is certainly the time of year, this is the time of year, and Councilman Walker, I don't know the particulars of how we communicate that, and I'd be glad to look into that and get back with you.
Thank you, I'd be appreciative of that. And then I'm also, the other issue, which is probably a little more in-depth, but one I'm concerned about is the issue of outsourcing of school health services, and I know you were on the committee that task force that the county executive had and his transition folks, and the outcome of that report was recommendation outsourcing those services. Is that something you support?
Mr. Walker, that is a, I was co-chair, I believe, co-chair of the transition team for county executive Schu. Among the array of public health issues that we looked at, one of them was school health. School health is a vitally important program, it's over 300 staff, providing services every day in every school. What we looked at was the operation in some other counties that have transitioned in part or in full some of that school health services to other providers outside of county government. The recommendation in the transition report was to examine those other models. It was not to outsource, it was to examine the opportunities, what potentials, what was the downside risk of doing so, and to really, to do an exploration. I believe that there's always opportunity to improve. We have a terrific school health program. I'm very happy to have been a participant in developing that school health program and want to see it continue exactly as it is today. If we can improve quality by improving communication, by improving integration with other healthcare providers, let's bring that on.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
With that being said, we're going to move forward. We have Maureen Burt, is it?
Yes.
Thanks for coming out and visiting us tonight.
You're welcome.
Go ahead, ma'am, you're on.
Yes, well, good evening, distinguished county council of Anaronda County. Thank you all for your public service. My name is Maureen Burt, and I live in Pendennis Mount, close to the banks of the Severn River. I'm a member of the Severn River Association, and on behalf of the Board of Directors and their members, we want to publicly thank county executive Steve Schu for setting money aside for the supplemental budget to jumpstart the General Development Plan guiding growth and development that was, I believe, last done in 2009. So thank you to him for the responsible and wise stewardship of our land, waters, and air for our children and future generations, especially in the area of land preservation, restoration, and protection of our watersheds, our subwatersheds, and our creeks. Thank you for inviting, listening, and encouraging community partnership of holding the historic character and beauty of our state's capital, surrounding waters bordered by the Severn River and the Chesapeake Bay and the South Rivers and the Magathie, for cleaner, safer, sustainable waters, vegetation, aquatic life, and waterfowl, so our children and our children's children and all the generations to follow can enjoy swimming, fishing, crabbing, and playing along our rivers and bays, banks, and beaches. The Severn River Association was established in 1911, when residents along the shores of the Severn River came together to form the association. The original purpose was to protect and promote fish and game and develop reasonable means of public access to the river, and today, the Severn River Association is the nation's oldest organization in the country dedicated to the preservation of a river, and one of the largest civic groups in Anaronda County with over 70 communities represented, and the Severn River Association looks forward to participating in this process. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am, appreciate it.
Welcome.
And ma'am, if you don't mind, if you could please, your name and address in two minutes.
Mine?
Yes, please.
Okay.
Thanks for coming out and seeing us, too.
Hi, my name is Brenda Biller, and I live at 604 Trenton Road in Glenburnee, Maryland, and I'm here about the address on Furnace Branch Road.
Dennis Stevens, 205 School Lane, Lythicum, Maryland. I'm about three quarters.
Hold one second, sir. What we normally do is, madam, if you have something that you want to say, you get your two minutes of the spotlight, and then we'll pass it over to your counterpart, and he could do his two minutes. So did you want to say something?
Yes.
Okay.
The reason that I'm here is this house actually sits in my, behind me, it's in my backyard, and it's been burnt down for about a year and a half now, and there's always children over there at night, cars in and out of the driveway. I don't know what exactly that they're doing, probably drugs, but anyway, there's somebody always there, and it's just a hazard to children. And I have two grandchildren that are right behind us, and during the summer also, you can still smell the smoke from when this house was torn down, and we just want it removed.
Okay, now, just for argument, I heard you say Furnace Branch Road, is it, conversation?
Yes.
Okay, is that your area, Mr. Smith? Okay. Do you want to say anything, Mr. Smith?
Sure. I mean, I was going to wait till the gentleman spoke, and then sort of threw my two cents and so on, so if you wanted to follow up.
Sir, you want to do your two minutes, please? Name and address, please.
Yes, Dennis Stevens, 205 School Lane, Lythicum. And I have my testimony here, and I think the best thing you can do is look at the pictures that I took recently, and the first, it's on page one of my pictures, if you want to look at it.
Yes.
It's looking from Furnace Branch Road, and the house that was on fire was the one on the far left, and there's a house on the right, and the house in the back was affected by the fire. And the picture at the bottom of page one is Brenda's swimming pool and her house, and looking at the other house that was burned down in the background. On page two, the gentleman that you see at the bottom picture shows the house that was damaged by the heat from the fire, and he's an 80-some-year-old man, and he did most of the construction himself. And the picture, if you look at, on page three, I took a picture on the June 6th, and it looks through his house. His house is on the left-hand side, and his garage is on the right, and you can see how close that property is to him. And I took some pictures, this was immediately after, I've driven by there several times, and I, the first pictures I took, I believe, were, you know, it looked like, you know, may have been March or April of 2016, and I actually was able to get pictures inside the house, and the house is a wreck, and anybody that gets into it can hurt themselves or whatever, and then we don't know, you know, nobody can get into the property, and it poses a real danger, because if there's another fire in that house, that man is 80-some years old, he's going to be affected by that fire. He's the closest house to the fire, to that building. So I'm saying, I'm thinking you're going to need some kind of law that will allow you to address an issue, it's a safety issue. And the house is right, and I believe it's in foreclosure. So I'm just asking you if you can develop some kind of law which would deal with a situation like this. It's been going on for a year and a half, and it really is bad.
Thank you for your time. Mr. Smith?
So that was, so I did visit the property a couple of times about a month ago as well. I was actually over there cutting the grass, and just because the grass had sort of grown out of, made it look even worse, and so I apologize if you saw the vehicle and someone like they were stalking at the place, but it is really an horrific building, and you can't just board up a window with this, I mean, you see the pictures yourself, and so I spoke to a previous, well, not a previous, but another community, person who lives across the street, and said, well, maybe we can just come up with some sort of legal process where the county, if it's a specific safety hazard, and if you look at these pictures, it is certainly a safety hazard, where the county, because it is caught up in foreclosure, the owner passed away, her son also passed away, and so is literally sitting in limbo, and for the last couple of years, and I think the fire was about a year and a half ago, but the house was foreclosed on about five years ago when the son passed away, about four or five years ago, somewhere around there, and then it caught on fire with some of his friends who were sort of doing negative things in the facility. So I know the county executive or the administration is listening, but certainly this is something we can do, I believe, and we go back to the banks and say, hey, if you can't fix this within, you know, X amount of days, then we will tear it down, especially if it's a threat to the citizens and neighbors that live in that community. So, thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, well, we got it right there.
Thank you.
You're welcome, sir. Ms. Johnson, name and address, please, in two minutes, and once again, always good to see you, madam.
Thank you, Mrs. Chairman. Julie Johnson, P.O. Box 6634, Indianapolis, Maryland. I am really confused at the moment, because I thought this was the invitation to the audience, and I'd planned to make.
It is.
But Ms. Phillips spoke, and so are you going to have?
No, it's fine, it was Ms. Phillips was first, and then the invitation to the audience, so she came up and everybody else did, so you got your two minutes. Go ahead.
Well, except, the thing is that I wanted to say, I respect Fran Phillips, she's been a really good public servant, but there is a real problem about oversight of the Health Department with respect to the sewage systems and the septic systems, and all of you have heard my points that, you know, the people, you know, her subordinates allowed the construction of the septic system so that this neighbor is using my land to absorb the human waste, and I strongly object. The law requires a certified, or a boundary line survey, and the Health Department staff completely ignore that requirement. So it violates my property rights, confiscates my land and so forth, and I'm not the only one. The primary point that I was going to make related to the resolution from last week, when we were talking about racism and objecting to and opposing white supremacy, I wanted to remind you that the summer of 1964 was a pivotal point in U.S. history. There were three civil rights workers who were murdered in Mississippi, it made the news. If it had only been, you know, the black civil rights worker, it wouldn't have made the news, because there were lots of black people's bodies, there were a lot of black bodies found during the search for these three workers. Those three people were Michael Schwerner, Andy Goodman, and James Chaney, and I think we need to remember that when there is something really important, you can't just go and do it once. These three young men gave their lives to make our society better, and how many people are dedicated enough to keep showing up and say, look, we want a better county. We want people to express their determination that we are not going to allow racism, we are not going to allow white supremacy to destroy our community.
All right, please summarize, Ms. Johnson. Okay, thank you very much, I appreciate your testimony. Okay, anybody else who want to address the council on any subject not on the agenda? Okay, seen no movement in the crowd. Okay, is there any councilman who'd like to place something on the agenda? Mr. Peruca?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I would just like to take a couple of minutes and make a clarification, make a statement. During our last session, there was, Councilman Smith introduced a resolution which had to do with racism, and there was a great deal of public comment, and while I'm not anxious to continue that, to continue that in an unwarranted way, I do, would like to make a clarification, so I would like to do that. I once was a member of a group known as the League of the South. Back in 2004, when I was the nominee of the Constitution Party for the office of president, the group endorsed me, primarily because they agreed, as did many others, with our party's platform, calling on all federal officials and agencies to recognize the limits placed on their authority by the Constitution, and to obey the oath of office by not exceeding those limits. And since I was raised by my parents to understand that all men have dignity because they are made in God's image, I personally have never been comfortable in the company of those who would espouse racist views. And during my encounters with the League of the South and the League of the South members, I was not made to feel thusly uncomfortable. On the contrary, from my personal experience with various members, I believed the group to be integrated and nondiscriminatory with regard to race, and my recollection of topics that were discussed in my presence concerned objections to overreaching and intrusive policies and programs of the federal government, they did not focus on matters of race. Nevertheless, during 2014, I did become aware of statements made by League of the South leadership denouncing interracial marriage, and I chose to resign my membership back at that time and declare my disagreement with that view. And in the years since my resignation, I have from time to time been made aware of other statements with which I strongly disagree, and with which I desire not to be associated, made by League of the South President Michael Hill. Recently, the Capital Gazette in an editorial attempted to tie me to certain outrageous, inappropriate racially charged statements by Michael Hill. Had I been asked by the editors prior to publication, I would have categorically rejected and denounced these and any other racist statements. I do not believe, and I have never believed, that racism is acceptable. As a youth, I learned from my parents actually to admire the Reverend Dr. Martin Luther King and his nonviolent approach based on biblical beliefs and principles, and I remember the account of Rosa Parks, her courage and her bold example which encouraged others, was related to me by my father, who was an honorable man and who taught all his children that all God's children were deserving of dignity. When I ran for president in 2004, I twice appeared on the C-SPAN show Washington Journal, and during one of those segments, the host asked me a question about race, and my response then is, of course, a matter of record, and my position has not changed. In both private and public policy, we must remember that God created only one race, the human race, and therefore, all elevation or denigration of individuals or groups based on skin color is immoral and shameful, because it violates the law of nature and the law of nature's God. And so finally, to be clear, I denounce and repudiate white supremacy, black supremacy, and every form of favoritism or exclusion based on skin color. I make this statement as a man under the authority of my Savior and Lord Jesus Christ, who has commanded us to love one another. And I thank you, Mr. Chairman.
All right, Mr. Peruca, thank you. Okay, with that being said, may I have a motion that the partial readings of any bill resolution or minutes constitutes reading of a whole?
I'm going, Mr. Chairman.
Now you got a second. Madam Secretary, please read the minutes of June 5th, 6th, 9th, and 14th of 2017.
The meetings were called to order by Chairman John Grasso and opened with the invocation, followed by the pledge of allegiance.
Thank you, Madam Secretary. May I have a motion to approve the minutes of June 5th, 6th, 9th, and 14th of 2017? Second. And I got it. Motion carries, minutes of 5th, June 5th, 6th, 9th, and 14th, 2017, stand approved as read. Madam Secretary, please read the title of bills to be introduced this evening.
Bill Number 6517, An Ordinance Concerning Office of Planning and Zoning and Department of Inspections and Permits: Reorganization of Duties and Responsibilities.
Thank you, Madam Secretary. Madam Secretary, please read the title of the resolutions to be introduced this evening.
Resolution Number 23, Resolution Approving the Continued Service of Frances Phillips's Acting Health Officer. Resolution Number 2417, Resolution Approving Estimates of the Annual Costs of Providing Health Insurance Benefits and the Employer Subsidies Used to Determine the Rates for Certain Participants Under the County Employee and Retiree Health Benefits Program. Resolution Number 2517, Resolution Approving Appointment to the Board of Trustees for the Anaronda County Retirement and Pension System. Resolution Number 2617, Resolution Confirming the Appointment of a Resident of the County to Serve on the Pension Oversight Commission for Anaronda County.
Very good. Madam Secretary, please read the title of Bill Number 2517, is amended.
Bill Number 2517 is amended, An Ordinance Concerning Zoning Agritourism.
All right, Administration?
Mr. Chairman, members of the council, Bernie Marsick and the county executive's office, we are still supportive of this bill, and we hope you will pass this bill tonight. We'd be happy to answer any questions now or wait until the amendments.
Okay. Anybody in the council who want to address the Administration?
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Walker? Mr. Walker.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Well, let everybody kind of get settled. Throughout this discussion of this bill, I've met with folks who are supportive of the bill and folks who opposed the bill. And one of the folks that I met with, I, he had asked me to consider asking some questions of the Administration. And I want to, you know, maintain that I'm in no way trying to undermine this bill. I want this bill to pass. I think it's a good bill. I think there's been a lot of work and effort on it. And, but I do want, I do feel like I need to ask some of these questions, and hopefully you can provide us with some answers. I wondered if somebody could clarify how it will be determined whether a use is an accessory use, or I guess how, because that's something that we're, we are not just debating with this bill. Accessory use is something that's, you know, used in other sections of the, of the law and code. So I was wondering if somebody maybe could clarify what the term is as far as accessory use.
If you don't mind. Knowing her from playing zoning is probably best to answer that.
Awesome, thank you.
I think she's turning it over to me.
Oh.
Kelly Kenny, Senior Assistant County Attorney. I did look into this a little bit this morning, too. So I have, those terms are actually defined in the code, so I think those definitions are helpful in this situation. So a principal use is defined as a primary structure or activity for which a lot is employed. And then a principal structure is defined in the code as a structure that serves a principal use of the lot on which it is located. And then an accessory, or just the term accessory is defined in the code as a use or structure that's customarily incidental and subordinate to another use or structure. So I think, you know, those definitions are certainly helpful in deciding which uses are primary and which are principal and which uses are accessory.
Okay.
Do you have a specific example?
No, I was just trying to clarify for some of the folks who have a question about how it's going to be determined what is an accessory use. Because I think they fear, I think some of their fears are, you know, towards the worst end of the spectrum, obviously. And so they're just, they want, I guess they want to make sure that there's a, some sort of, you know, clear, clearly defined term that they, that they can rely on, I guess, when they're looking at some of these accessory uses that might pop up.
Right, yeah, luckily they are defined.
In your opinion, does this bill allow restaurants in RCA, RLD, or R1 as an accessory use?
No, I've looked into that issue as well. Restaurants are a separate use in the zoning code, so, and those are not allowed in most residential zones. I believe they're allowed in just R15 and R22, but they're not allowed in any of the zones where agritourism would be allowed. So a restaurant would be its own principal use on a lot, so it wouldn't be allowed as an agritourism use.
Thank you very much. Another question. The, there's concern about the potential for, and again, I think this is a worst-case sort of scenario, but some of the folks have, are feared that as a result of some of these new agricultural uses that are accessory to the primary use, that there, that there will be an opportunity for the landowner to then take the, the use that they have now that is maybe more considered more commercial in nature and use that as the basis for a change in character argument in front of, for purposes of changing zoning in front of the administrative hearing officer. Do you feel like that that's something that's an issue?
You know, that's not something that I have really looked into. Do you have an answer to that, Lynn?
You know, I, I don't know how well I can answer that question because obviously we don't want to, you know, we can't speak to what kind of decisions the hearing officer might make on an application for change or mistake.
But from your opinion, like, in your, in your opinion, do you think that the, that an accessory use to a agricultural operation would change the character of a farm such that it would allow them to all of a sudden apply for a zoning change? Or that that would be logical to do that?
Well, in my opinion, it wouldn't be likely that the types of uses allowed under agritourism would be of the type of nature that would support a change of character argument. That's my opinion.
Thank you, I appreciate that. The, the other issue is, I guess, with regards to potential for traffic management and parking standards. You know, we have those on wineries and breweries and other things. Is there, is there, there's concern about that, I guess. Is there, is there a way you could address that?
Can I take that?
Sure. I think that was something that was discussed with the original bill, and there was a lot of, I can't think of the term that was used at the first meeting about the bill, but a lot of opposition that it would become too burdensome on these agritourism folks to do this. We brought that back to the council and struck that provision from the bill, I believe unanimously. So we didn't think it was necessary.
Thank you. And that's all, that's all the questions I have now. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Anybody else?
Actually, can I ask one other one?
Yeah, Mr. Walker, fire away.
Mr. Marzick, it just, I had another conversation with someone who's opposed to the bill over the weekend, and one of the, one of the, you know, concerns she raised was some of the things I've just talked about, and it's sort of been the common themes in these sorts of questions. And I guess, from my perspective, and I just want, I wanted to make sure that we were on the same page on this, and I don't want to put, you know, words in your mouth or assume that the Administration had to do something. But from my perspective, you know, I think my position to her was that it's very difficult for us to sort of legislate every potential unintended consequence. That, I don't think the council, or I didn't feel like the Administration in all of our discussions here and amongst my discussions with the committee, workgroup members, was there any desire to create a situation that would cause harm or negative impact to the community? And I think what I tried to explain to the individual I had on the phone was that, as I've represented this district for the past six and a half years, I understand a lot of those concerns. And I've tried to work with the community in the situations where there has been, you know, potential for issues or issues that have developed. And I think, again, I don't want to put words in your mouth or assume what the Administration's position is, but I explained to her, from my perspective, I'd be more than willing to come back as some of these things develop and continue to try to address or tweak or change or, and I think the folks who worked on the committee feel the same way. They feel like, hey, these are all great ideas that we have that we think are going to support agriculture. Do we, do we have it absolutely 100% perfect? I don't think, I think there's no piece of legislation that's been 100% perfect. But my impression, at least talking to her, was that that sort of helped her understand that we realized that there might be some potential unintended consequences, that we're willing to come back and address those. And I think even the extent that the committee is willing to maybe continue to have meetings and address some of these things as they develop, that was sort of my pitch to her and my commitment to her, really, that we would be willing to do that. I just wanted to see if the Administration had the same thoughts.
Sure, absolutely. No, we, we've actually answered a lot of the similar questions that you were posing earlier, which I think is why office law is so well-prepared. We've been having a lot of these discussions for the last, especially the last couple of weeks, and we've made the same commitment that we're very open to reopening this section of code if there are issues that need to be addressed in the future. And I don't think that this is a perfect legislation by any stretch, and I'm sure there's going to be concerns from, you know, the community or residential side of this, and there's going to be concerns from the agricultural side that will have to be addressed in the future. So we're absolutely committed to coming back to this.
Thank you, thank you, Mr. Marzick. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, anybody else? All right, thank you very much. We're going to open up the public hearing on 2517. So if you want to chime in, you've got two minutes. Name and address. We're going to call a bunch of names. Don't get mad at me if I butcher your name, because it's all done with love. So with that being said, we have Mr. Mike Shea. It looks like Mr. VK Holten Dorff, and it looks like Mr. Larry Almo. And you want to come up here and take a chair? And Mr. Paul Christensen. And anybody else who wants to chime in? Because I've got four names, but I've got six seats. Come on down. Mr. Shea, we'll start off with you. Two minutes, please. Name and address.
Good evening, Chairman. Good evening, Chairman Grasso and Councilman Walker, my councilman. Mike Shea, Red Top Farm, Shady Side, Maryland.
Thanks for coming out.
Thank you. South County is a beautiful place. I like to say, not by accident, but by hard work. And for the past 25 years, I've been part of that hard work. In my 22 years of leadership with South Arundel Citizens for Responsible Development, we've worked closely with some of the people and organizations that are here tonight. Our farm has held fundraisers for Growth Action Network, and Sacred is a member. I've contributed time and money to the issues we all care about. Some here tonight have reservations about this bill, but I'm here to share with you that right here and right now, after 10 amendments, our farm, other small farms, the horse farms, and the vineyards need and want this bill as it is. What is good for all of us is good for keeping the best of South County viable and keeping our lands rural. The consequences of this bill will help keep my children and our three grandchildren living and working on Red Top Farm. Our family at Red Top Farm offers an opportunity for our neighbors to purchase local produce and eggs and honey. By purchasing on our farm, customers enjoy a farm experience, which, when buying locally from our farm, they're willing to pay a premium price. The book Farming in Anorunde County, with your vote in favor of this bill, hopefully when the next chapter of this book is written, our farm will be a part of it and our children will be a part of it. Yesterday on Father's Day, I was giving a framed picture of our grandkids on the farm from my son. That was my Father's Day present. And the book about our farmhouse, our historic farm, I'll end right here. I'll summarize.
Thank you.
Basically, when I first testified, I testified against this bill on the first night, as you remember. I was the first person in. We need this bill. The farms need this bill. If you want to keep South County rural, please pass this bill tonight.
Thank you. Okay, let's see, our next person, I guess it's Mr. VK Holten Dorff. Am I saying it right?
Yes, sir.
Boy, I'm on a home run tonight. Two for two. Go ahead.
I don't know how to make this turn on.
I'm going to give you some juice. There you go.
Okay, good evening. Thank you. It's a pleasure to be here and to see everyone, and we really want to thank you very much for your work and consideration on the agritourism bill.
I need your name and address, please.
VK Holten Dorff, Red Top Farm, Shady Side, Maryland.
Thank you, ma'am. Thanks for coming out. Okay.
I had the honor of serving on the agritourism committee for nine months, and it was an eye-opening experience for me to sit with our various counterparts from the county and the state and people who are active in various aspects of agritourism as a learning environment for us as we drafted the legislation and represented farms. I represented farming from a sort of a new boutique, small farm. And one of the things that's important and makes me feel good about when I get up every morning is I've had a career in corporate America. I've actually got a checkbook that's got a little bit of money in it. And if I can't make farming work, then how can we expect the next generation to come behind me and introduce young farmers and them have an opportunity to raise their families on the farm and make a career? So I think with this legislation, it's going to really help grow the next generation of farmer who may not inherit 200 acres but may be able to come up with enough money to buy five acres and watch their dream fulfilled. The other thing, and all of us have been talking to our friends in the environmental community and other farmers, be they horse farms or small farms like mine, and it's really, really important for farmers to be good neighbors in their community and to maintain the lifestyle that we have with our neighbors now and to anticipate the unintended consequences, that none of us want to see this bill morphed into some kind of nightmare Disneyland farm experience that our neighbors hate. You know, we want to continue to be good neighbors like we are now. Thanks very much, and I hope you pass this bill.
Thanks for coming out, ma'am. You're right on time. Okay, Mr. Larry Almo, is it? Almo?
Yes, sir.
Am I saying it right?
Uh, yeah.
Man, I'm three for three now. Thanks for coming out and seeing us tonight.
Well, thank you. My name is Larry Almo. I'm here representing Almo Brothers Nursery and Farm located at 1704 Old General's Highway in Annapolis. I wish to address Bill 2517 concerning zoning agritourism. My family strongly supports this bill, and we wish to express our sincere appreciation to Councilman Grasso for his introduction. This bill is very important to us since it provides a platform from which we can diversify our farm offerings and look for improved financial stability, both of which we believe are consistent with the stated objectives of Governor Hogan's agricultural mission. This bill, our farm continues to support our family, starting with my wife and I, my son, my grandchildren, and in not-too-distant future, my great-granddaughter. So we're very anxious to see this bill be passed as it is today instead of lingering further on. The problem I see is the longer this sits, and the longer this bill sits out there, the longer we're going to see more of what ifs, and the bill may never, ever get passed. We operate a small, five-acre family farm in a RLD-zoned area. We currently operate under permitted function for farming and under conditional approval for nurseries with landscaping and plant sales and conditional approval for home occupation. We grow various fruits and vegetables, with many of our vegetables and herbs grown in our greenhouse from imported Italian seeds. For generations, my family in both Italy and the United States have been making fresh mozzarella and fresh ricotta primarily for family and friends. As part of my Italian heritage, I have continued that tradition, and with the encouragement and positive comments from many people who have tasted our products, we had planned to diversify our normal farm operations by adding these products and making them available to our regular customers. In addition, as a, as a result of word of mouth and inquiries from several restaurants and other businesses, we see the potential to grow and further improve the financial condition of our farm. We have worked closely, we have worked, we've worked closely with the Maryland Health Department. Our processes have been approved. We were fortunate enough to have an onsite kitchen, which we renovated at great financial expense, and were unable to secure the permit to continue making the mozzarella and ricotta because of current county's zoning.
Please summarize, Ms. Almo.
We believe the passage of this bill will provide the needed changes to enable the opportunities for primary farmers like ourselves to diversify operations. We believe the sufficient time has elapsed since this bill's first introduction in early April to allow any stakeholders to respond, so I trust we can look forward to this bill being voted on and approved tonight. Thank you.
I think you ought to, in my personal belief, at least by my vote, I don't think you should worry. I think it's a good thing. And Mr. Walker is looking out for you.
Thank you, sir.
Okay, Mr. Paul Christensen, thanks for coming out to see us this evening. Two minutes, name and address, please.
Thank you. Paul Christensen, 231 Hidden Valley Road, Tracy's Landing, Maryland. This is my third time in this seat saying this bill has a lot of loopholes and a lot of potential for abuse and a lot of potential possibilities for unintended consequences. And I appreciate the questions that Mr. Walker asked just now. He's helped shed some light on some of these questions, but you'll notice that we got some kind of vague answers to some of these important questions. I'd like to pass three questions forward and ask that at least the first two be asked to the people who are sponsoring the bill, and let's try to get these resolved and get some of this on the record as well. Question one is, how will a county learn that an agritourism activity has been initiated, and who will decide whether there's a bona fide agritourism activity? The second one is, what are the restrictions on location, size, frequency, and duration of an agritourism event? And thirdly, that question's already been asked about the upzoning, and the answer, frankly, I'm not very satisfied with. I want to just point out that this bill addresses 47,000 acres of land, 10,000 people who live nearby, and now's the time to fix things. Before we go forward, let's get it right. We'll have to come back to it. This is too big. It's not going to, it's not going to go away. So I encourage you all to try to get some clear, simple answers to some of these questions that have been asked, and let's try to get this thing right before we go forward.
Thank you, sir. Sir, name and address, please.
My name is Stuart Chaney, 5682 Greenwich Road, Lothian, Maryland.
Thanks for coming out, Mr. Chaney. Nice seeing you again.
Nice to see you, Mr. Chairman. So I grew up in the 1940s in Harwood, Maryland, on Route 2. My mother and I and my brothers grew vegetables in our own garden, and we sold it, sold them on the side of Route 2. Then I became, we went into tobacco farming for a while, and then I realized it wasn't the place for me to be in farming. But I do realize that South County has a lot of pressure. We're a small community, there's a lot of pressure for growth in our county. It's been around a long time. And I am one of the, I sat on the Small Area Committee, keep South County rural, came out of that committee, and I firmly believe that we need to do that. My family and I spent tens of thousands of dollars two years ago fighting to prevent the Renaissance Festival from relocating in South County, which would have been a total disaster traffic-wise and forever change the character of the county. I believe that the agritourism bill has a lot of things in it that are going to benefit farmers and make farming more sustainable in the long run, and I'm in support of the bill. However, there are things that are not in the bill. There are things that don't check the size and don't check the, don't check the frequency of when these events can occur. And the top end of it is the problem that I have. I appreciate tonight, Mr. Walker said, I'm in, he also said, "I'm in favor of the bill, and I agree to come back and correct the problems." And I've talked with numerous, numerous of the stakeholders today, and they're all in agreement that they would come back with a, with a new bill to correct this bill. And not that is my particular position as well. I think there's a lot of work that needs to be done on it just for the upside. Everything that's done now is great. Next.
Thank you, Mr. Chaney. Appreciate that. Sir, name and address, two minutes, please.
My name is Hamilton Chaney, 623 Old County Cove Road, Friendship, Maryland. Thank you for the time. Thank you for the time to speak tonight. I'm too in favor of the bill tonight. I'm a believer in agritourism and the benefits that it enables the farmers and the farming community. I live on a farm. I grew up on a farm in South County, and I know how important it is to have these, these uses that will make farming and farmers more viable on their property. And so I think the bill itself, as it reads, is a very good one. However, I share the previous speaker's concern on the very high, high end because we have seen pressures from uses that aren't commensurate with the size and scale of the roads and the area in South County. So I strongly believe, and I know that the, that the purpose of the bill is genuine and that it is meant to be a very favorable bill with the good consequences, but I just think that when you, if, if it were to be manipulated in a way that would, it could be very detrimental to, to the quality of life in that area, that would ultimately be very detrimental to farming and the agritourism uses that it supports. So I would ask, too, that you consider in the future, after this bill's passed, because I do think it needs to be done, the people have done enormous amount of work on it and lots of thought and work have gone into it. It's a good bill, but an un, a well-financed person that's trying to manipulate it could, could take some bad ways with it. So I ask that you pass it tonight, but don't be surprised when we're back here asking you to tighten it up a bit. Thank you very much.
Okay. Thank you very much. All right, appreciate all you folks coming down. Anybody else want to chime in on 2517? Come on down. Good evening, sir. Gentlemen, we'll start off with you. Your name and address, please, in two minutes.
Stuart Pittman, 440 Doden Road, Davidsonville.
Thanks for coming out, sir.
I'm here as a farmer, but also as the county issues chair for the Intermodal County Farm Bureau, which supports the bill. What we have talked about, I've talked to people from Growth Action Network and Herring Bay Advocates and the Chaney's and a number of people who, and my family as well, have concerns about the upper limits and have acknowledged all along that what's going to happen with this bill is that there's going to be a checklist of how you define what is agritourism in much more detailed way. And if we do need to come back and put some high-end limits on some of this stuff, we'll do that. And I don't think anybody's opposed to that because the farmers don't want to be bad neighbors and they don't want to change the, the character of South County. There, there is an amendment that'll be before us that, that I think does that. If you look at the definition of agritourism in the bill, there's nothing about Christmas festivals, there's nothing about New Year's parties, and there's nothing about Halloween festivals or attractions. We know that there's a company, Bennett's Curse, that's been trying to get into a farm to, to do what they've done in Baltimore and DC with large-scale Halloween haunted house-type operations. And I don't think any of us in this room see that as agritourism. There's nothing agricultural about Halloween. So hopefully, you guys will, will scrap that amendment and just continue on with this as an agritourism bill and vote on it tonight. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Appreciate you coming out. Sir, name and address, two minutes, please.
Ray Greenstreet.
Thanks for coming out, Mr. Greenstreet.
Thank you. 391. West Bay Front Road, Lothian, Maryland. First, I'd like to say I appreciate all you've done for agriculture in Intermodal County, and I'm asking you tonight to step forward. Let's get this bill done and get it passed. This thing's been in the works for a year and a half. It's been a great collaborative effort, not only with the farmers, the Farm Bureau, but also everyone in the county. We've actually taken the county out to farm visits. We've done a farm-to-table. We've committed to Steve Schu, county exec. We continue to educate members of the county to learn about agriculture. I'm personally committed to tweak the bill as we need to once it's passed. I too want to maintain agriculture in South County. We don't want to become Montgomery County with a bunch of houses and developments because we can't afford to be farmers. So I need you to step up tonight, please. Make a decision, get it done, and let's support the agriculture community of South County and Intermodal County. Let's make Intermodal County agricultural friendly. Thank you very much.
Thank you for your time, sir. Sir, name and address, two minutes, please.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
There you go.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. My name is Stephen Marley from 524 Herring Avenue, Tracy's Landing. I'm here representing the Advocates for Herring Bay. I'd just like to say quickly how much we appreciate the interaction that we've had with both the county council officers as well as with the executive for the county as well. My only comment I want to make at this stage is that we agree with a lot of what has been said before about the potential dangers of the upper limits that would be permitted by this bill and are very much in favor of additional consultation and committee work to be performed after this, this bill has passed and would respectfully submit that we can expand the members of that committee to include not only the agricultural community, which has been extensively engaged to date, but also the environmental and conservation communities to make sure that all concerns are addressed. Thank you very much.
Thank you for coming out, sir. Madam, name and address, two minutes, please.
Yes. Anna Chaney, 5801 Brooks Woods Road, Lothian, Maryland. Thank you all very much, once again, for your continued support for agriculture in our entire county, and I just wanted to ask you to go ahead and get this bill passed tonight. We have spent, I as the chairperson of the work group and also a board member of Southern Maryland Agricultural Development Commission have done extensive research, extensive collaborative efforts with all members, all stakeholders, and I feel as though the bill is well-written. I am also committed to convening subsequent to the passing of this bill tonight and furthering our discussion to make sure that all concerns are addressed and any appropriate legislation or amendments are, are addressed in the future. And I thank you very much for all your support, and I do anticipate, anticipate that this bill will pass this evening. Thank you all very much.
Okay. Thank you, folks, for coming out. Once again, anybody want to speak on 2517? All right, I'm going to close the public hearing on 2517. Madam Secretary, please read the title of Bill 2517 as amended.
Bill 2517 as amended, an ordinance concerning zoning agritourism.
All right. Is there any discussion? See, none. Okay, there is an amendment. Madam Secretary, please read amendment number, let's see, we got, is it number 10? Amendment number 10.
Amendment number 10. This amendment provides for Halloween festivals or attractions on a farm and adds the conditional use provisions for Halloween festivals and attractions.
All right, can I get a motion to adopt?
So move.
I'll second. All right, Mr. Walker, this is your amendment. What do you got for us?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. For the past probably eight to 10 months, I've been working with one particular business that has been interested in operating within the RA-zoned land, and we've had lots of conversation about the direction of their, of their business. I know the administration has met with them on multiple occasions and expressed interest in assisting them, has tried to help them find land. And my understanding is at this point that they do have a parcel of land identified in the western part of the county, Mr. Puski's district in particular. So I did run this amendment by him prior to introduction this evening. This, this, the bill as it stands right now, as many of the folks who are testifying here stated, is very broad. It's very broad and very all-encompassing in that it allows many uses that are not actually listed within the bill to be held on a farm as long as they are an accessory use, as we talked about the term accessory earlier, an accessory use to an agricultural activity, agricultural, agriculturally-related operation of a farm. And so the amendment before you would allow for Halloween festivals or attractions in the RA-zone land, and it would allow that with certain restrictions on it. It would allow it, as you see the list here in front of you, I won't necessarily go into all the details, but 10 acres, it sets time restrictions on when they can operate till in the evening hours in particular. And as you know, most of the, most of the, I guess, discussed or proposed agritourism events are held during the day, the hayrides, the corn mazes, and things like that. In this case, though, most of these events would be held in the evening. And so my concern was, one, that they be on a parcel of at least 10 acres and, and to protect the folks that are nearby, to allow them to operate up until 10 o'clock on a regular weeknight and up, only up till 11:00 on Friday and Saturday nights, similar to provisions we've put in place on other businesses that are operating in the county. As an example, the, the racetrack, I believe, on the western side of the county there in Odenton. There are some other requirements that are placed on this, but this, this would, this would intentionally allow this particular use in, within this bill, within the agritourism bill and under the certain conditions that we've outlined within this amendment. And I'd ask for your support for this amendment tonight. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Walker. Administration?
Mr. Chairman, members of council. Mr. Walker's correct. We have been meeting with Bennett's Curse folks, trying to work with them. I have not, but people in the county executive's office, and I believe Ms. Barge as well, they came before this group. I would ask you to resist this amendment for the reason it's actually been outlined earlier tonight, that this now opens up the bill to a new purpose that could potentially cause these concerns. And my, my fear is that this then creates opposition to this bill and kills this bill in two weeks because you're going to end up having people concerned that they're going to have Bennett Curse coming in, you know, next to them. I know you have a specific area they're looking at, or any kind of other Halloween festival, whatever it may be. So that's, concern number one is that it is going to create too many questions from local communities about what this would be. And two is that it may actually end up restricting these agritourism events in a way that, you know, for, you know, a hayride or a corn maze that would, I'm not sure if it would be considered a Halloween festival or not, will be required to be on a piece of land that it's not currently required to be on. You know, I think we're committed to, to help these folks, and I think if this was done in another piece of legislation, you know, we very would work with the council to try to, I guess, address their concerns and what they're trying to do. So we would ask that the council oppose this amendment, and if anyone on the panel has anything more to add, or feel free.
Mr. Chair.
Mr. Walker. Mr. Marzick, so I, I take it from that, that you're, you feel like, and I guess this is sort of goes to some of the concern that was expressed by Mr. Christensen and the Chaney's in particular. Their concern is that the bill is broadly written, that it encompasses a lot of different activities on the farm. Is there some reason why the administration feels like a Halloween festival isn't, couldn't be related to a farm? I mean, if, if we have a clear, a clear definition of what an accessory use is, I, I assume that that would be a test, would be a good way to say it, maybe a test for whether or not that planning and zoning would view that as a agriculturally-related activity. So in other words, they're going to have to come and explain what they're doing, you know, in their, in their farm operation. They're not just going to be able to say, hey, we're a farm. They're going to have to prove that they're farming the property and that this is an accessory use. I mean, in some ways, I guess, some, some ways you could argue that it might be included already under the bill because it's so broadly written, there's not a specific list of what can and can't happen under the guise of agritourism as long as it's accessory use.
Right. So I, your last question, I think, is a legitimate one, is whether or not it could be allowed. I think that this group has met with Bennett's Curse, and they've said that they don't feel that their operation is agritourism.
Can I just, can I just stop for a second?
My flip in response is that I think if they were growing zombies on their farm and then put those zombies into the barn, then it would be.
Sure.
That's, that's the way I view it, is that they have to have something that they're producing that is being used with the.
Sure. And I don't think they've had to, and I would just say in response, based on my conversations with them, and I've had quite a few, I think they are, they, they, when they went to meet with the committee, they had a very clear message, I think, back from that committee. Their feeling was that they, the committee did not support their efforts. In their conversations with me, they understood, I think, that the going forward, if they were to be considered in, within the scope of this bill, that they would have to, they would actually have to farm. I mean, they're not, I think when they came, they were coming with, here's how we've been operating in the past. They were operating at Blobbs Park. It was in an RA-zone, I guess, and it was in a sort of an agricultural setting where they sell pumpkins and other things like that. And then, oh, by the way, they also happen to have, you know, Bennett's Curse there on the weekend nights and certain times during the year. And so I think the message they took back from that, at least in their conversation for me, was, okay, when we presented it, we presented it based on how we've always run our business, but we understand if we're going to fit under this bill within these definitions, that we're going to actually have to farm and prove that to planning and zoning in order to qualify as an accessory use. I don't really have a question. I was just making more of a statement to, to counter what you were saying, that the committees aren't pushed back against.
Ms. Barge was there for this meeting, so maybe she can comment on kind of the specifics of this.
Hi, Lisa Barge, Economic Development. We were asked, the agritourism work-study group, to meet with the Bennetts, and we did. The work-study group continued to ask them numerous questions about their business plan and try to get an answer from them where that would show that they're, demonstrate that they're actually doing agriculture in a different, in addition to the Halloween haunt activities they were doing. The agritourism activities they were considering were corn mazes and hayrides, and we just didn't feel like that was agriculture. They were doing that specifically for.
Ms. Barge, aren't many of the farms that we're discussing, and many of the farms that are down here tonight and have supported this bill, they are farms that are in fact doing corn mazes and hayrides?
But they're also doing crops and farm and vegetables and other, they were doing a corn maze, they were growing corn to make a corn maze. They weren't doing anything with the crops. And the other thing, when, when we heard from many of these people tonight that were worried about the high-end uses, they were looking at bringing in 10,000 to 20,000 people during their operating season with the potential for 50,000 people. That's a lot of people coming in during that timeframe.
And so, but, but I think you sort of made my point in your first comments, and that is that the, the fact that they, see, they, they came to this meeting to show their business plan, that they, the way they've been operating. When they left that meeting with you all, with the group, they came to me and said, we understand now, because we weren't prepped when we, before we were introduced into this meeting, we were just told, come to the meeting, make your pitch. When they left the meeting, they understood that in order to qualify under the provisions outlined in this bill, that they were going to have to prove that they were operating an agricultural business on that farm. They couldn't just show up and grow corn in order to create a corn maze. And their intent, from my conversations with me, is that they intend to purchase a piece of property that's located, is currently either currently a farm or is zoned RA, would allow a farm, and to actually farm the land, either through themselves or through hiring a farmer to do that. And in many cases, as you know, throughout the southern part of the county, there are folks who have zoned residential agricultural land that are farming that land, that they're not actually farming it, that somebody's coming in and farming it for them. So they, they understand, I was just, just trying to assure you all that they understand that that is something that they must do.
That was not the message that they convened to the work-study group.
Right, I understand. What I'm saying is that they, they weren't aware that that was what you all were looking for when they went in. So when they came out, they understood, we're going to need to do this in order to allow this use. So that's, that's why I'm, that's what I would just say back.
We've met with them for several hours and continually asked them questions to, to try to demonstrate that they were going to be doing agriculture as the primary use on the property.
But if, but if they aren't, I understand, but my argument is, if, if the bill outlines these uses as accessory, don't you think that planning and zoning is going to have to, they're going to have to justify to planning and zoning that they are actually agriculturally using the property in order to claim that this is an accessory use? They are. Planning and zoning isn't just going to take their word for it. I hope not. They're going to have to prove that they're having an agricultural operation in order to qualify for this amendment.
The bill says that it has to be either assessed agriculture or have a soil and water quality plan through soils.
Sure. Right. And they're willing to do that. So if they're willing to do that and come to planning and zoning and prove that that's what they're doing, my argument is that they should be allowed to run their operation.
If their business plans have changed and they're truly going to be doing agriculture and the haunt is going to be a secondary.
And if they're not, then they won't qualify, and planning and zoning will reject them.
And if that's the case, then this amendment wouldn't be needed.
Ms. Strombauer.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. First, I want to go on the.
First, I want to go on the record and say I'm opposed to zombie growing. I don't like that suggestion at all, Mr. Marzick. So I have to admit, I'm not, I'm not really familiar with the Bennett's Curse model. I mean, my kids are scaredy cats, so we don't go to these things. But if, this conversation was confusing to me, who said what, whose business plan does what, I don't know. If our friend Mike Shea wanted to open a haunted house on Red Top Farm, could he do that, under the legislation that's before us, putting this amendment aside? Because I'm confused whether this amendment enables haunted houses or it puts restrictions on haunted houses.
I think you can do it. Whether or not it's agritourism is the issue.
Well, I mean, to me, the nexus between haunted house and agriculture is not necessarily there. I think this is a very interesting issue. I think my preference would be to take it up as separate legislation, we can debate it of the merits, but I'm still not 100% clear if this is a restrictive amendment or an enabling amendment. I mean, I.
I think that's our preference, too, because, again, having looked at it from 6:58 to 7:15, to try to figure out what the amendment is doing, I think that we would be more comfortable to do it as a standalone bill if there's something, or even amend this. If it needs to be amended into this bill, as we've said, we're very open to, you know, fixing the bill as we move forward. My concern is that inserting this at this last minute is going to make this bill fail in two weeks.
Are there haunted houses in Anarondle County that operate now, Halloween haunted houses? I mean, I know there's one at the fairground, right?
It's probably a high school.
At the high school, okay. So maybe not, maybe not on any farms?
I don't know.
There was one.
I'm sorry, what, Ms. Tate?
This one has been operating in the county already.
What?
Bennett was operating in the county.
Why is it not anymore?
Because they were at Blobbs Park, and Blobbs Park is being redeveloped, so they're not there anymore.
Ah.
But they're right now, what the use, the use they have, they can go into RA right now and operate without any conditions.
What was the zoning on that former property? I mean, what enabled them to be able to do the haunted house on that property? And is that applicable to an agriculture use? I'm still very confused on this. Why can't Bennett's Curse just, if they did it at Blobbs Park, why just can't they find another piece of property? Why do we need an amendment? I don't get it.
I don't know. I'm not sure if you can.
They're on, someone's saying C-3, I think, from the chief's side, maybe.
It was the, excuse me, Lynn Miller, Office of Planning and Zoning. The site that Bennett's Curse was previously operating on was not an RA zone site, I think it was zone C-3. So it was, you know, completely different situation. We do have some other haunted house-type things operating in the county. I can't tell you specifically what zoning districts they're located in. But typically, that type of thing, because it's short-term and seasonal, often comes in and asks for a temporary use permit. So that's sort of treated differently, too. In other words, it's not usually something we've had to address as a permanent use in the code.
Well, can I, can I put either you, Ms. Miller, or I see Ms. Rhodes has conveniently arrived at the table?
Yeah, I was going to tell you that she's correct. The property at Blobbs Park was zone C-3, which allowed theaters, live performances as a permitted use.
Okay.
And so that's how they were operating.
So in another C-3 or similar zone property, someone could open up as a similar.
Right, it was operating under a different category, and any other type of similar use that would operate on residential property would have to be authorized as a temporary use.
Understood.
Either it's on county property and it's not subject to the code, or it's allowed as a temporary use, where it would have to get authorization and it's temporary.
Okay. Thank you, thank you, Mr. Chair.
Ms. Rhodes, I have a question about that.
Okay.
Because in the code, it says theaters, live performances, and temporary outdoor are permitted in the RA.
There's a separate, there's a separate category in the commercial district where there's no qualifier for temporary.
What's the qualifier under permitted use for in the RA?
The qualifier in the RA is the temporary use, meaning you can't have permanent structures. But if you look at the C-3 district, there's no qualifier, so you could have the theater's live performance without the temporary in the code.
Okay, so if they had, I'm trying to figure this out, because they keep bringing up corn mazes, which are included in the definition. If they come, go down and set up a corn maze, which is not permanent, and it's, they're under this temporary use for a finite period of time, and they're permitted in the RA, what is the qualifier that the planning and zoning office would use to keep them from doing their corn maze versus someone who's on a farm from doing their haunted corn maze? That's my question.
Well, in this case, it would have to be evaluated on whether or not it is a hayride. It sounds to me like this is more of an entertainment-type of event versus a corn maze, where you have performances. I think it's two separate categories, based on the amount of individuals that traveled to that site when it was on a commercially-zoned property. I think that the distinction is.
But what I'm saying is, if you're comparing corn maze on farm versus corn maze on Bennett's farm, what is the difference?
I didn't, it was my understanding that the principal use was not corn maze, or the accessory use wasn't corn maze, it was more.
But that's what I'm saying, if the Bennett's, I guess what I'm asking, if the Bennett's went down and farmed the land and put corn on it, and decided that they were going to do this temporary thing and do a corn maze, which is permitted based on what the zoning code says right now, how is that different from a farm down the street who says, we're agritourism, and our corn maze is special and different? So that's what I understand, it's the same thing, and it's in the definition.
A corn maze is a corn maze.
Right, that's what I'm asking, yeah.
We would have to look to see whether or not their use would be accessory to a farming operation. And based on my understanding of their business plan when they operated at Blobbs Park, it would definitely exceed the scope of what I believe the intent of the agritourism committee was trying to achieve.
And I guess my question is, does that matter if they just come in and say, we're doing this as a temporary outdoor activity for the months of September and October, and it just happens to be the same thing? That's why I'm confused.
I guess it wouldn't if the key word was temporary, but it's my understanding, with my understanding from the Bennetts, that they wanted a permanent building of approximately 25,000 to 50,000 square feet. So to me, that usurps the definition of accessory, because then it becomes the principal use of the property with a structure that size. I mean, that's based on my conversation with the Bennetts.
Okay. Mr. Chair. All right, Mr. Prousky?
Yeah. I just want to follow up, because certainly there's a potential of this going in my district, and I'm going to go based upon history here. The prior council actually put restrictions on the Capitol Raceway, which has been there for about 50 years, and limits because we had complaints. And I see this amendment, and again, whether we pass it tonight or somewhere else, that we should pass a restriction on times and when it should and should not be. Because I think we're debating here to allow something or not allow, and if this is something that's going to come, I can tell you the people in my district are going to want restrictions on it. So I'm going to ask the administration, if this does pass or not pass, are you willing to support these restrictions? I need an answer for that, because people are going to ask, you know, me in terms of what's there. Whether it's agritourism or it's not, I get that. We've been debating this for three or four weeks now with the amendments about what is and what isn't, but I understand certainly where it's coming from. So I don't know if the administration wants to speak to that or not.
That's all I was discussing, Ms. Rhodes. Again, I haven't had time to talk to the county executive about this, I just see him for the first time, so, I mean, I think the restrictions seem reasonable, I guess the best I could say at this point on this.
Okay, thank you.
Again, I just think it'd be better if we, it seems to me that we, you know, we just did it with your bill with the dog grooming facility. I think things like that are maybe a better approach to do this, is a standalone bill.
Thank you.
And we've done it, Mr. Smith's district and Mr. Walker's district.
Mr. Chair. I was just, I mean, I'm more than willing to come back, just like you all have stated, and I, we stated on the agritourism bill, to come back and have a separate bill if you want to, if you want to do that. My concern is at least putting this in motion so that it gives them a certain level of predictability between now and the season that's coming up, the Halloween season that's coming up in November, so that in fact, in case they do, and are successful in taking over a farm and can prove that what they're doing is an accessory use. And I understand that part of the concern that Ms. Rhodes just expressed, and she clarified her comments, saying it's based on the business plan that she knew and understood them to have, that business plan can change. And my argument has been throughout this process, that if they in fact change their business plan and prove to planning and zoning that they are operating agricultural operation, and want to work within the confines of this bill in order to make that case and reduce the size of the building, or not have a building, or have just a corn maze, that's going to be up to planning and zoning to make the determination whether or not this new business model that they're putting forward fits within the category of agritourism or not. If it doesn't, I take the administration on faith in that they'll come back with a separate bill in order to try to fix the situation and create an environment within which they can operate in the county, because I'd like to see them here. I think this just gives them an option now to pursue, which is what they've asked me to try to do, and that's why I put the amendment forward. So, thank you, Mr. Chair.
Okay. Anybody else? All right. Madam Secretary, please call the roll on Amendment Number 10.
Mr. Smith.
Mr. Chair, I didn't hear Mr. Marzick's previous comment. Did you say you were willing or were not willing to entertain this in the future as well?
Absolutely, absolutely. The administration's been working with these folks for, yeah, for a while to get this fixed, so.
We're in the posture of vote. Mr. Smith?
Mr. Smith.
Aye.
Mr. Fink?
Nay.
Mr. Prousky?
Aye.
Mr. Peruca?
Nay.
Mr. Trumpbauer?
No.
Mr. Walker?
Aye.
Mr. Grasso?
Aye.
Four in the affirmative, three in the negative. Amendment Number 10 is passed.
Okay, Bill 2517 as amended will be heard on July 3, 2017. Madam Secretary, please read the title of Bill 2817 as amended.
Bill Number 2817 is amended in ordinance concerning finance, taxation, and budget, admissions, and amusement tax agritourism.
Okay. I want to take a motion, ask a motion to hold this. So moved. All right, get a second.
Second.
All right, and we're going to hold this vote until July 3 of 2017, because it kind of dovetails with 2517. All right, and let's see.
Shall I call the roll?
Call the roll. Madam Secretary, on holding Bill 2817.
Mr. Smith.
Aye.
Mr. Fink?
Aye.
Mr. Prousky?
Aye.
Mr. Peruca?
Aye.
Mr. Trumpbauer?
Aye.
Mr. Walker?
Aye.
Mr. Grasso?
Aye.
Seven affirmative, none of the negative. The motion to hold the vote on Bill 2817 to 7317 is adopted.
Madam Secretary, please read the title of Bill 3217 as amended.
Bill Number 3217, an ordinance concerning zoning, administrative hearings, Board of Appeals, rezonings in residential districts.
Okay. This bill is mine, and with the intent of this bill, like I've said prior several times before that, I believe that we're upzoning property without a clear direction in which way we're going. Councilman Smith introduced a resolution several weeks ago that was calling for the general development plan to be expedited or moved forward. The county executive has also provided funds to move the general development plan forward. So that's all great as far as moving in the right direction, but in the meantime, a lot of stuff can kind of slip underneath the radar until that all happens. So what this bill is about is to ask for, to stop any upzoning in Anarondle County, through the whole county, through all seven districts, to not allow someone to turn around and take a piece of property, such as maybe an R1, one house per acre, to R15, okay, until we have the general development plan. To me, like I said earlier, I just feel like we're operating this county on blinders right now, and I would feel much comfortable if we had the general development plan in front of all of us, so when someone comes before the council, or the administration for that matter, to try to change something, we can look at the development of the county, and we can see how much population is here, or how little is here, before we turn around and improve an upzoning case. I think I've made the argument probably several meetings before, that properties being zoned in R1 to R15 in already congested areas. My district has been one, Councilman Fink's district is another area. And I just think it's not prudent for us to turn around and continue to do piecemeal upzoning or development without having a generalization of which way this county is going. And I'm hoping that the council would support this, because no doubt that all of us did vote for the resolution to support Councilman Smith's thing, but like I said before, is this feel-good vote, or is it really about, we're trying to correct the problem that we believe we all have, because all seven of us voted for it? So with that being said, administration, you're on.
Mr. Chairman, members of council, with me at the table, Kinley Bray from the Office of Law, Larry Tom from Planning and Zoning, I think Mr. Holman is here as well. Before I respectfully disagree on this bill, I did want to point out, this is Mr. Tom's last meeting, as Planning and Zoning Officer, wherever you before the council, and he's been a huge help to me over the last two and a half years. I know he's been a help to you all and all your staff as well, on a lot of issues for your constituents, so I appreciate you all joining me, and thank you, Mr. Tom, for his work.
Thank you, Mr. Tom.
Thank you, Bernie. Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of council. It's been a tenured tenure now, and that's a good tenure from most people's standards, I think. I've enjoyed serving as the Planning and Zoning Officer. It's been my honor to serve in that capacity for the citizens of this great county. I've been in these chambers countless evenings and many, many hours, working with you and your predecessors, and hopefully I've been able to assure you that I've given you the best professional advice that I could to help you in your decision-making.
You sure have, Mr. Tom, and I'll tell you what, you were always in that position, darn if you do, and darn if you don't. You're going to have people that love you here and hate you over here, or vice versa, so God bless you, and, you know, we hope that you have many more success in your retirement, and you assure yourself, you served us well.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Just on the bill, quickly, I know there's an amendment here, too, but we continue to oppose this bill, I think as we've said in the past, that we don't feel the current system is broken. We think the current system works very well with Mr. Holman in these reviews, and we would urge you to oppose this bill.
Okay. All right, with that being said, let's see, we're going to open up the public hearing on 3217. If anybody wants to chime in, please do. And here comes Ms. Johnson. Thanks for coming down once again, Ms. Johnson. Please name an address in two minutes, please.
Julie Johnson, PO Box 6634, Annapolis, Maryland. In some ways, I support this bill. I really have grave concerns about the alterations in zoning levels. In my neighborhood, there is a man who came in, and you've heard the story before, he bought a foreclosed house on a substandard lot for $136,000, got into the place. You know, he magically added, you know, excavated both ends of the house, but officially, he's not, you know, increasing his footprint on the property. There were, in the plans he submitted, there were two separate kitchens, he disconnected the expanded first, you know, he took the walkout basement, had people come in and dig out the basement, so it was deeper, never got a certified boundary line survey, claimed the property was setback from the road by 15 feet. The deed and plot from 1953 that I obtained from the public records showed that he didn't have 15 feet, he needs a 25-foot setback. And yet somehow magically, this man was allowed to do all the things, virtually all the things he wanted to do, and it's zoned R5. It's a single-family dwelling, but he's being allowed to basically convert it at least to a, you know, to two separate residences, disconnected. And it's just, you know, you know, it's a total violation of the R5 zoning thing. So, but the other thing that's really important is, I met some surveyors and engineers from Pennsylvania who were visiting Anarondle County, and they told me that this, in Anarondle County is one of the counties in the state that does not require a boundary line survey as a matter of law. Now, how can you get, how do you measure a 25-foot setback if you don't know where the property line is? This is preposterous. And, you know, you've heard me cite all these other different issues. So here I am, disagreeing and, you know... So here I am, disagreeing, and, you know, I don't think I'm mushy-washy. I agree with all seven of you that there is an issue about increasing the density in upzoning properties, but I do believe it's really important to require those boundary line surveys as a matter of law, because Mr. Holman testified at the last county council meeting on the last bill. He said words to the effect of, because I don't have the exact quote, "You should see the site plans these people bring in. Looks like it was drawn on a paper napkin after a few drinks," and everybody laughed. But we've seen those things. You should see what this neighbor took in, in the way of a plot that had cut off the fact that it was merely a location survey and so forth. Anyway, thank you very much. I appreciate it.
Thank you much, too. Anybody else want to chime in on 3217?
Can I say thank you to our, are you doing?
No.
Oh.
I'll leave the area.
Okay, you're going to do it.
There you go. Okay, we're going to close the public hearing on 3217. I'm just going to, I'm going to just chime in one more second on this. Administration doesn't feel like there's a problem, and I guess, you know, in my representation of Northern County, I think there is a problem, and if you, if you have any doubt that there isn't a problem, then I suggest you go to work in the morning and see what the traffic looks like up there. The argument that seems to be made before planning and zoning continuously, that if one property is zoned this, then we should go ahead and allow this. One developer alone, without mentioning names, was able to go from an R1 to an R15 three times. Heck, he wasn't happy with an R10 or an R5, but let's take it to the max. So I see a problem when I get to see one developer get three pieces of large properties zoned from R1 to R15, and I see other people that are denied that. And then I see the traffic on Ritchie Highway and all through Northern County, and to sit back and actually say that we don't see a problem here, or that everything's working fine, I'd suggest maybe go out there and knock on some doors and really talk to the people and ask them if they see that, seem to have a problem with it. I'll point out once again that the entire council must have been concerned enough that all seven of us supported Pete Smith's resolution to enforce or move forward on the general development plan. I mean, all seven of us went into that resolution. So there must be concern for all of us to do that. So with that being said, I mean, we can operate the county on blinders and just hope that things work out the way they are, or we can actually go out there and put our tennis shoes on and talk to the people in North County, because I think they beg to differ with your opinion on how things are. And with that being said, we've got an amendment, and Mr. Smith is the amendment, so Madam Secretary, please read Amendment Number 2.
Mr. Walker, I'm going to call Bill 32 for vote.
What are you, what?
I'm going to read in, I mean, I'm going to read in Bill 32.
Yes, please. Madam Secretary, please entitle. You said vote, I said, okay, what are you doing?
Yeah, said the wrong thing. Bill Number 3217 as amended, an ordinance concerning zoning, administrative hearings, Board of Appeals, rezonings in residential districts.
Thank you, Madam Secretary. And once again, we have an amendment. Mr. Smith, that's it. Madam Secretary, please read Amendment Number 2.
Amendment Number 2. This amendment reduces a termination date included as part of the sunset clause of the bill from three years to two years.
Okay, going to motion to adopt.
Ms. Chair, before you adopt, withdrawing Amendment Number 2.
Yeah, okay.
Okay, I guess that's the end of that deal. Okay, being Amendment Number 2 has been dropped, I guess we're going to turn around, and we're going to call vote on Bill Number 3217.
Ms. Chair.
Mr. Smith.
Over the last couple of weeks, I've sort of been thrust into this rezoning sort of, I've gotten a lot smarter on this subject. By trade, I'm actually an IT guy, I do computers. I don't do rezoning. And what I have uncovered, and I spoke to Mr. Tom, and I do want to give you credit, we met a couple of weeks ago, or maybe, maybe a little, yeah, maybe two weeks ago, and went through the thorough process, different component that were reviewed, because that was cluster development, where we talked about a whole host of issues. And since then, I've all started looking at other issues in the county, and started to lay this foundation of how did we get to where we're at over the last 100 years, to be exact, and what was the unique circumstances between the last 10 years versus the last 100 years? And so that's sort of the analysis that I've been sort of uncovering. And my rationale on why and how I vote is I try to understand, get at the heart of the problem, and not be reactive either emotionally, or taking some sort of just gut check or gut reaction to something that may or may not be the actual problem. And so I've uncovered a lot of things that I believe, and I'm actually going to come back to the council with that analysis to show them how we got to this particular situation, based off of some of the conversations we've had as well, but sort of the dated analysis of the number of projects, things like that, that I think will shed light on how we got to where we're at, and what I believe we should do to fix it. That being said, that's part of the reason I withdraw Amendment Number 2, and I'll turn it back over to the chairman to proceed with the voting on this particular bill.
All right, with that being said. All right, let's see. Madam Secretary, please call the roll on Bill Number 3217 as amended.
Mr. Smith?
No.
Mr. Fink?
Nay.
Mr. Pusky?
No.
Mr. Peruka?
Nay.
Mr. Trumbauer?
Aye.
Mr. Walker?
No.
Mr. Grasso?
Aye.
Two in the affirmative, five in the negative. Bill Number 3217 is defeated.
Okay, let's see. Madam Secretary, please read the title of Bill 3417 as amended.
Bill 3417 is amended, an ordinance concerning licenses, towing companies, police-initiated tow's.
All right. We have a whole host of sponsors down there, including yours truly, Mr. Walker, Mr. Pusky, Smith, and blah, blah, all the way down. So basically, I think 3417, and unless you want to chime in, Mr. Walker, 3417 came alight with a lot of, I believe, contention between the towing companies and, of course, the police department inspections permits. And so this bill just basically came about, just like any other department, if they want to change something, they come before the county council, and we all look at it and vote it up or down. And so what we've done is we've done the same thing for the towing people, so that the fear that everybody's being treated fairly. So 3417 is alive, live and well, and it's got a boatload of sponsors on it, and that's kind of where we are at this point. Mr. Walker put an amendment in last time that redoes the towing manual to, I guess, you know, more favorable, and I guess in situations to the towers and everybody that thinks is fair. I guess the administration may have some input on what they think is not right or whatever, and it was invited all last time to put some things in to change whatever they wanted to change, and that's where we are at this point. Anybody want to say anything besides me? Okay, administration, you're on.
Mr. Chairman, members of council, I think we'll probably wait to comment on the amendment at the appropriate time, unless the council has questions now for the police or inspection permits.
Mr. Chair.
Mr. Walker.
Mr. Marzick, maybe, are there, let me ask you this. Are there objections to the bill as it's amended currently, as far as the amendment that we, are there, we added language last week that outlines some of the rules of the road, I guess. Does the administration object to any of the rules that rode that were sort of outlined in that amendment?
Well, I guess I was going to touch on that when we offer our amendment.
Oh, okay, all right, fair enough.
Okay. Administration?
We're done. The public, we'll wait for the amendment.
Okay, fair enough. All right, so we're going to have the public hearing on 3417. If anybody wants to come down, our little towing friends, or whatever it is, you're more welcome to come down and get your two minutes of fame. What are you looking for?
I just look for a sign.
We don't have one. Good evening, folks. Thanks for spending your evening with us. I don't see a sign-up sheet for you, so we'll just go right off the cuff here, and we'll start from you, sir, on the right-hand side, and I just need your name and address in two minutes, and hear what you've got to say.
My name's Mark Bowen.
Thanks for coming out.
Address in 1211 Triton Beach Road in Edgewater. I'm a 70-year resident of Anarondle County. I've been in business for myself for towing and service station business for the past 48 years, 45 years of them, the past 45, I've been a licensed Anarondle County toer. I would like to see this bill passed the way it was put in with the amendments. The bill is fair to everyone. The amendments cover the regulations and rules that were put in by the police department and inspection permits together. Every year, they get time to put in some regulations or explain what regulations are supposed to be there, so there can't be no objection to them, because they're the ones that put them in there. So I would appreciate it if you could pass this bill the way it is. Thank you.
Mr. Chair.
Mr. Walker.
Mr. Bowen, just a quick question for you. There was some discussion prior to this evening about, I know one of the particular rules that was sort of, folks felt abused by, was the changing of the lettering size. Did you have to change the letters on your vehicle?
Yes, sir. What happened is, past two years, we had one person operating traffic safety for a long period of time, Corporal Stein, and we had rules and regulations that covered the lettering. The county code has always said that the name of the company and the address had to be four inches. This past year, we all went up, get our trucks inspected, and they failed all the trucks. We had to call Dan Kane from Inspection and Permits and get him to stop doing the letter inspection and just stick with the mechanical and the safety equipment. The rules and regulations they had added in, they put in there that the DOT letters, number one, had to be four inches. The paragraph before that says that we have to abide by state and federal law. State and federal law is two inches. We've always had to have two inches. All the trucks had two inches. Also, they added that we had to put our storage lot location, street, city, and state. Well, like, I know all you know where Annapolis Mall is, there's Exxon Station right across from it. Gary, he's here tonight. His address is something West Street, Annapolis, Maryland. Well, his storage yard's a mile and a half away in Crownsville. His address for that is Crownsville Road, Crownsville, with a zip code, Maryland. You're familiar with a rollback truck. You have a door, half of a fender, and a four-inch panel going back. There's no way that you can put all this on a truck, and it makes no sense to put your storage yard location when you have the name of your company and where the people would have to come. So this legislation did change that. You still have to have the information, but it goes under state and federal law. The law on there says you have to be clearly legible within 50 feet, and DOT numbers would have to apply with the state and the federal government, which would be two inches.
Thank you. Thank you.
All right. Do you want to say anything, ma'am?
I'll go next, after him.
Okay, sir, name and address, two minutes.
Okay, Michael Talber.
Thanks for coming out.
Thank you. Atlantic of Maryland, Talber's Towing Company. Same as Mr. Bowen here, I've been doing it myself for 43 years. My father did it before there was even a county towing license. I think that this bill should be passed the way it is. It looks like it has everything in it. It still gives the police a way to go after towing companies that may not be doing the job the right way, and it's the way it should have been done in the first place. The police investigate it, and then they come to the inspections and permits, and you go for a hearing, and they decide what they're going to do with you. That's still in this bill that you passed here, so I don't, as Mark said, all the rules and regulations were taken out of here, and some of the things were eliminated that just didn't make any sense, like the four-inch lettering deal, and there was just a few other things. It seemed like every time somebody new came in, they wanted to make a bunch of new rules, so you had to stop everything you were doing and go another direction. And it just doesn't make any sense, so I think this is a pretty fair bill, how it's written. Like to see it passed.
Yeah, I would just chime on what you were just saying, and I think what the police were telling me is that new people came in that position, and they started looking at the regulations, and then everybody starts going to that direction. And I can tell you what, in my business and that, with rental property and all that stuff, God, I dread when every time we get a new housing inspector, because now suddenly, it's a whole nother issue. This person's found all these problems that never existed before, and I, yeah, I can relate to this very clearly, what you're talking about.
My trucks went down, some of them are 17 years old. They went down for 17 years without a problem. This year, they all failed, so.
Isn't that amazing? Yeah, it's just what happens.
Same trucks, same lettering.
Ms. Johnson, did you want to say something?
I do, but the other.
Ma'am, did you want to, I'm sorry, did you want to say something now?
Sure, I do, yep. Caitlin Talber with Talber's Towing, Hailthorne, Maryland.
Thanks for coming out.
Yep, thank you for having me. I agree, piggybacking off of what both of them said, I think this amendment is fair and should be passed as is. When somebody new comes into the department and wants to make all these new rules and regulations, you know, I think it's, it's easy for them to just write something down on a piece of paper in this manual, but I don't think they really think about the practicality and whether or not these rules and regulations are actually logical, and they don't realize how much it can deter a small business from conducting their business. It's not necessary, some of the rules. I just think it puts a big strain on conducting business, and it's not necessarily keeping the roads safer, the citizens safer. It just seems tedious, many of them, and I feel like if they want to do new rules and regulations, then they should be able to present it to the county to make amendments, and at least then it's a discussion, and then people can actually decide, like, do we actually need this? You know what I mean? And what's the purpose of it? So I believe this amendment, this bill is fair and should be passed by this, so.
Mr. Chair.
Mr. Walker.
For any of the three of you folks who just testified, is, when there's changes been made like that, have you all been consulted or asked what your thoughts are on the changes usually, or has it just said, here's the manual, and you're stuck with whatever?
They need to comment to me.
Could you turn your mic? No, thank you, it's my.
They commented to me that at the meeting, no one said anything about the rules and regulations. It was a red book we had, but they gave us the book a month after the meeting. So how would you be able to comment on what was in there when you got it after the meeting was over? So, you know.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Yep, there's a big difference between sitting in the chair and standing by the chair, isn't it? Ms. Johnson, you want to, two minutes, name and address, please.
Julie Johnson, PO Box 6634, Annapolis, Maryland. I have two things about towing that I would like to mention to you. As senior citizens, I have, as a senior citizen, I have a number of friends who use handicap parking spaces, who live in residential areas, like townhouse groups or, I don't know, condo. Anyway, there's a problem because people who do not have this required certification to occupy the handicap spaces come and park, and these people cannot use those limited number of handicap spaces close to their residences, but because it's residential property, they can't get the signs posted that this is commercial property, and the, you know, unlawfully parked vehicles will be towed away, so there's this big problem, and the police will not order the, you know, will not call the towing companies and have the vehicles moved. You have heard that my neighbors park on my land have been doing so for years, and at the hearing on May 27 of 2004, there were two Anarondle County police officers, one of whom was named Officer Guida, and I can't remember the other gentleman, but he testified and, in response to two questions, that if the, you know, you can't get private towing companies to remove vehicles from, or you can't get the towing companies to tow vehicles off private property. They just don't do that. And that's not exactly in this bill, but I'd like, since these folks are here, I think it should be either an amendment to the bill, or at least something that you're aware of, because it is a problem, and it's not limited to my property. There are other people who come and testified before you that they have other neighbors who park on their property. And as you know, the Anarondle County Police Department will not issue any parking tickets and will not tow my neighbors' vehicles. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Johnson. Always appreciate that. Okay. Anybody else want to chime in on 3417 before we close the public hearing? Seeing no movement in the crowd when they close the public hearing on 3417 as amended is now closed. Is there any discussion? Seeing no movement. Okay, what we have is there are two amendments, so.
Mr. Chairman.
Madam Secretary, please read. Bill Number 3417 is amended.
Bill Number 3417 is amended, an ordinance concerning licenses, towing companies, police-initiated tow's.
Okay. Thank you very much. All right, so we have two amendments once again. Madam Secretary, please read Amendment Number 2.
Amendment Number 2. This amendment provides for a tow manual to set standards for. This amendment provides for a tow manual to set standards for police towers, requires that the tow manual be approved by ordinance of the county council, and that subsequent revisions or modifications to the tow manual be approved by resolution of the county council, clarifies that the police may exercise lawful administrative discretion where necessary to promote public safety or welfare, modifies the marking requirements for tow trucks to mandate three-inch letters, strikes proposed additional standards for police towing, and approves a tow manual for the county.
Okay. And can I get a motion to adopt?
Sub move.
Well, I'm going to give some courtesy here. Okay? I'll give you a second. All right. So we can have a discussion about this, fair enough? Okay. With that administration, you want to go ahead and talk about this a little bit?
Sure. Mr. Chairman, there was a council with me at the table, Chief Altamari, Ross Passman, Mark Conklin from the Police Department, Dan Kane from Inspection and Permits, and Greg Swain from the Office of Law. The amendment before you comes from the suggestion of the chairman, and we discussed it last week. This would adopt the county's towing manual into the code and require the council to approve future changes to the manual by a resolution. This is similar to the process that we do for, I've been comparing it to the school chart or to landscape manual, building code, things like that. The manual that is before you also includes many of the suggestions of Mr. Walker's amendment that he had offered on behalf of the towers. And we'll go through some of those, and we'll also talk about the ones that you had asked about, which ones we did not approve of that were in the original bill. And third, it adjusts the letter size on the trucks to three inches, as has been requested. And as I said, fourth, it would require that any future changes to this manual will be required to come down before the council. If you'd like, I can go through a couple of the items that were included based on the bill. You can see them in the definitions in the manual. You can see many of the definitions that are adopted are either verbatim or very close to being verbatim from the bill that's before you. And I'll defer to Mr. ...
Mr. Chair.
Major Passman and the chief to talk about the issues that are of concern.
Mr. Smith.
Ms. Tate, just to clarify, is this the amendment in the email?
Yes.
That was just sent down about an hour ago.
Yes, we got it at 5:00 today.
Yes.
With the manual attached.
Would the administration be willing, because I'm going to make a recommendation to hold the bill, even though we get past this technical amendment that's next, to be able to read that manual?
Where are we at, where are we at in the timeframe on holding the bill? We're going to have enough, madam?
The bill expires on the 21st, so you have two meetings. Actually, you have one more to amend, and then you have to vote on it on the second meeting.
Okay.
So you want one opportunity?
Okay. All right. So let's see, we go down here. Okay. So do you want to go ahead and just, Mr. Marzick kind of chime in just a couple of other things? So the council, I guess, and everybody else can hear the similarities. You said you wanted to mention a couple of things in the similarities in the manual.
Sure. Mostly with the definitions in the beginning, Mr. Chairman. If you look at definitions for specialized equipment, tow report, vehicle, vehicle debris. Now, missing the other ones, maybe Major Passman can jump in or chief on the other changes that were included.
Major Passman is our technical expert, so I'll let him.
Let me grab, do you have more of the, I think, let me grab the work from his.
While you guys are flipping through that, let me just ask a very simple question. And this has been bugging the daylights out of me. We had that last meeting that we're up there, you know, at the college, and maybe I misunderstood this whole conversation, but when a towor gets asked to tow a boat, do we compensate them or don't we?
We've been trying.
Okay.
I guess Sergeant Conklin in charge of Traffic Safety.
Okay. So we've been trying. Okay.
There's peculiarities in the law as far as how you dispose of boats.
Right.
We've been running into problems with the landfill as far as whether they're allowed to waive fees, and part of it is stuff we've been trying to work through to figure out how we can do it. But yet, for the most part, we've been trying. Once they've exercised all the avenues they have to do it, like, there are certain towors that don't really have a problem, other than certain boats. The ones that have gone and done their part and say, I have no idea how to get rid of this, then we step in and try to work with the county departments that we need to get rid of it.
All right. So we took care of that because in Mr. Walker's amendment, it addresses that situation to make sure that these people get paid.
Yeah, the danger with his amendment is the way he writes, I think he puts reasonable fees, and Mr. Smith and Mr. Walker were a party to a problem we had with, you know, reasonable fees on a tow before, where that can be interpretive. I mean, someone could say $20,000 is reasonable.
Yeah, I remember that flipping that truck over was an interesting thing.
Yes, sir.
And see, I don't think, yeah, I don't think anybody's going to consider that outrageous thing as being reasonable, but I think if they bring the receipts from the county, you know, whatever charge there, you know, for disposal of it...
And again, that's what we're trying to do. We're trying to, once they've exercised their avenues and they've done the prep they need to do to get rid of it, we help get them to the landfill and get it tossed.
All right. Anything else you want to say, Mr. Marzick?
Got a question, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Smith.
Pardon, Major Passman. Mr. Marzick, I just want to clarify that this amendment just strictly brings in the current manual that's being run today. Nothing new, nothing different, nothing changes. Is that correct?
No, there are modifications to the manual based on some of the amendments from the bill and based on updates. You know, some of the things are very simple from, you know, rather than naming specific holidays, it just says the county holidays. And again, I'd like to have Major Passman, if he can, walk through that.
Okay, Major.
Okay, so one of the, I'm going to let Sergeant Conklin talk about what he incorporated from Mr. Walker's language, because there was some language in there that we felt that was appropriate and that we went ahead and put into our tow manual. But there were some issues with some changes that were in this law that we had issues with. First of all was that only we were going to follow federal regulations on marking. Currently, federal regulations only say that there needs to be a DOT number and a legal trade name. We feel, not only for police towing, but for non-consensual or trespass towing, that the public has a right to be, or should be able to see the name of the towing company, to see what city they work out of and what phone number they can call if they see their car getting towed away at some particular time. Again, the federal regulations only, they don't require permanent markings, so you could have magnetic signs move from tow truck to tow truck to tow truck. So it does not cover what we actually see, what we actually feel is necessary. We all feel in the police department that it should be three inches. We feel, we've talked to the towers, especially with the rollbacks, that three-inch letters do fit on the side of the rollbacks. The four-inch lettering was in law, has been in law for a long time, but we do agree with the three inches, I'm moving it to three inches.
And hold that right there. Now, what is, federal law is what, four inches or no?
No. The federal law says it must be clearly visible from 50 feet in a contrasting color. It doesn't define who can see it at 50 feet. I may be able to see it better than, you know, my mother. It's extremely ambiguous, and that's the same problem we have as DOT inspectors is, it's interpretive. And we have people with one-inch letters that they say they can see it, so it's harder to even enforce it.
Okay. That's fair enough. It's open. Let me throw something in, and start from the towing people. You're the president. If you'd come up here and grab this mic for me real quick. The council, a couple of members asked me that question prior, and I just wasn't quite sure what the answer was. To change the letters on a truck, how much does that actually cost to do something like it? Turn, let me get your mic on. How much does it cost to actually change the letters on a truck?
You probably, little about $700 to $800 a truck.
It is that much?
You're required to have three trucks for your license. Most towers have, like I have, seven or eight. Most towers have five or six.
Okay. Thank you, sir. Major, you want to continue?
Yeah, we're certainly not asking anybody to change. If they have four inches and they want to keep four inches, we're just saying the minimum should be three inches.
I got you. I think the problem was is that we acknowledged that we had some new people coming in, and they were just following, I guess, whatever regulation was.
Mr. Chairman, may I speak?
Please.
May I speak?
Please.
I've sat...
Say again, please.
I've sat quietly...
Okay, good.
While my bosses' motives were questioned, and I've sat quietly while my motives were questioned. Nobody's talked about the fact that the former employee, we had complaints that he was too cozy with some of the tow truck companies. Nobody's talked about that here today, and that when a new employee came in and started to try to equalize the enforcement across the companies, and I'll say this very clearly here, Mr. Talber and Mr. Bowen are two people who do it right.
I didn't even know anything about this person you're talking about.
But of course you don't.
This is news.
But what happened when the new employee came in was that they tried to instill an equal treatment for every tow company across the board, and they started to enforce things that had been on the books and overlooked. So I really can't sit here while the motives of my employees are questioned anymore. I can't do it.
Okay. Got you. Chief, I don't know about me personally, but I'm not questioning the motives of your employees.
Sounds like it a lot, Mr. Chairman. Sounds like it a lot with subtle cuts. It sounds like it a lot with innuendos.
It's okay.
Mr. Chairman, point of order.
All right. It's okay, chief. We're okay. And appreciate, it's that Italian blood in you, just like I get revved up.
It's one thing to do it to me, it's another thing to do it to my people, Mr. Chairman.
Okay. Fair enough, Mr. Chief. Major, you want to continue? What else you got?
One of the other issues that was changed was going to allow the towers to have a 15-day grace period to notify the police department of out-of-service trucks and/or new trucks instead of telling us immediately. It would also allow a towor to operate an uninspected truck for 15 days before inspection. We wouldn't know what type of truck is being operated at that point, whether it would pass muster. We wouldn't know when the truck actually was bought, when the timeline started. So we certainly don't want uninspected trucks going out towing. The point that we've made numerous times is that this, the police towing program is an extension of the police department, and we need to make sure as a police department that we're protecting the citizens, we're protecting evidence, we're protecting people's belongings, we're making sure that they are treated respectively. And we have developed a tow program and a tow manual over the years, and it's been over 20 years that this tow manual's been in existence, and it's because of issues that we've run into certain towers. Certain towers have done the wrong thing, and it's a new thing that we never thought about, and we had to actually institute another piece of, another rule. And it's because of complaints. These guys get complaints all the time.
When you say, when you say these guys, you're fellow officers.
I'm sorry, my team, my traffic safety team, are the ones that have to get the complaints from the citizens. So when they have these complaints, and like, you know, this is something we didn't think of, it wasn't in the rule, we need to make a rule about it because it's important. Again, as the chief said, it's not the towers that are in this, it's certain towers that we've had issues with, that we've had to create a rule that, you know, to protect the citizens, and that's all it is. We're only here to protect citizens and to protect the program because they're towing for us. This is a voluntary program where the police towers, if they want to join, are towing for the police department, and they're representing us, and we need to make sure that we're towing, that we're looking out for the citizens.
Okay. Well, and like I think I've mentioned this before when we go through this, but nothing is in concrete, so you know, of course, you know, that any time that you folks would have an issue, you would just turn around and have the administration put in a piece of legislation, and then we all vote on it.
Again, as many of Mr. Walker's amendments, besides the ones I just listed, and the fee for the boats, we've felt that that was good language, and we've gone ahead and incorporated that, but to throw out everything else that's in our manual, that we've come to find that we need to run this program effectively, because with just what's in Mr. Walker's amendments right now, we cannot run this program effectively.
Mr. Chair?
Mr. Walker. You finished, Major?
Yes.
I was just going to comment on the, Major, I think, I mean, I think, I thought I was fairly clear at the end of the last meeting that I recognized that there might be amendments that we made to what was incorporated in the bill beyond what was introduced at the last meeting. And I didn't, I thought I was clear that we recognized that that might not be all the rules that you needed to run the program. But I also thought what was clear was that we had signaled by the adoption of that amendment and by the introduction of the bill that we were not, as at least the four of us that were on the bill, not interested in having a discussion about continuing the operation of the manual, and that we were, in fact, interested in having all of the rules and regulations spelled out in the code. And I understand that administration objected to that because I think Mr. Marzick used the word clunky or something along those lines, that it jammed up the code with a lot of stuff in it. But I think from my perspective, and I can't speak for the other three folks that are sponsoring the bill, but our thought process was exactly what the chairman just outlined, which was if there are changes that needed to be made or rules that needed to be made, that we felt like they should be in the code, which is why we introduced the bill. And that at any point, if you all wanted to make a change, either add something because of a mishap or a problem towor, because, look, I don't think any of us up here believe that for one second that every towor that's sitting in the back of the room and the ones that were signed up on the program before are completely innocent, what comes to every single situation that you all have run into. I think we fully understand that there are rules that were developed because there was an abuse somewhere. And Mr. Chairman mentioned just a few minutes ago, a situation where a truck got flipped over and we ended up seeing a bill for $11,000, which was, in my mind, extremely egregious. So again, I want to be clear that we in no way feel like the towers are completely innocent, but I think there's also, our feeling is that going forward, the reason I signed on to this bill was to remove the manual part of the way things have been running and incorporate into the code, so that when there's a change that needs to be made, that it's brought to the council. It gives the ability for the council to review the change, and it gives the ability for the towers as business owners who are impacted by that change to come down and explain their case and to make their case, and for you all to come to us and make the cases to why that change should be incorporated into the law. So I'm happy to continue to hear what you have to say about what you've introduced here, but in fact, what I wanted to make sure that was clear was what I stated at the end of the hearing the last meeting, which was that my intention wasn't to have a manual, it was to have things that you consider important into the actual code, and we can debate those on a one-on-one basis.
So if we were to do that, sir, from the beginning, I would have expected the entire police manual to be adopted into the code and not just certain things picked and chose, because everything that is in here, we feel is important. So I'm not asking for, we weren't asking for changes, we were asking for maybe the entire thing to be put in in the beginning. But again, this is 18 pages, and I'm not sure, you know, of all that amount of material to go into the code would be actually necessary. That's why I believe that we were putting this forward, because once it's adopted, any changes you guys would be involved in, just like we've been asking.
But in fact, the only way we'd be involved would be to vote up or down on all the changes that are proposed. So what I picture happening is an accumulation of proposed changes, a new manual given to us with all of those changes in it, and then an up or down vote. That doesn't, by that process, just in case you're not familiar with it, it wouldn't give us the ability to go in and make any edits. So we'd have to either say, yes, we agree with all those changes, or no, we don't, and the bill would die. That doesn't give us the opportunity to consider what the towers have to say about it and maybe make some tweaks, maybe make some adjustments. Maybe we disagree with you on a little thing here, a little thing there, and we feel like it's fair to do something that the towor suggested is part of it. My understanding is that the manual would be an up or down vote.
But we do that all the time now.
I understand. I'm just saying, I don't think...
You make changes to manuals or to other items that are approved by the council. If you all object to it, we reiterate, introduce it, and make changes to it. If it's not going to pass, it's not going to pass. So you all have to have the final say at it, so if you have objections...
I just think this is a better way, that's all. I'm not, you're obviously welcome to your opinion, and we can, you know, debate that debate that and when we have the vote on the amendment, but I, my preference, which is why I introduced the bill, was to incorporate the rules that the police department felt necessary, the towers felt necessary to have into the code so that we can make those changes as we go along. That was, that was my purpose behind supporting the bill.
I would put it with councilmen that, that the rules that we feel are necessary are what we brought to you this evening. And I, I have discussed with several of your colleagues to try to, to try to fold the manual into the code so that it's frozen in time. If there's a view that the police are being heavy-handed on it, then changes to the code have to come back to you. But what we've provided tonight is what, in discussions with some of your colleagues, what we were told to do.
I, I didn't have those discussions, I'm not, I'm not privy to what they agreed to. I just know what, I know my position, I just want to make sure my position was clear as to how I approached the bill and how I thought we should go forward. That, that was just my opinion.
Okay. Mr. Pruski, you want to say something?
Yeah, I just, I, I want to follow up. I, I didn't have any discussions, but I, I want to get to the legal issue. So this came up initially when we had people come and testify about auto return. This, this is how this all started, okay? We had a company that a contract was out, and certainly I've been told that that's going to be gone. Now I'm hearing rumors that it might be coming back. So I don't know what, what, what the difference is. Regardless, I have a question for the law office, this is a legal question, okay? Does the county license carnivals, circuses, pinball, drag races, fundraising, gas fitter, mechanical contractors, plumbing fire, food services, I'm not even gonna get into hotels, you know about that one, liquid waste haulers, mobile homes, multiple dwellings? And my understanding, the only one that we don't do is bingo operations, but you can comment on the code on that. Am I correct?
Greg Swain from the Office of Law. When you say comment on the code, what you're saying is those regulations, those standards are set forth in the code.
Correct.
That's correct.
Okay. So I guess my question is, in this whole debate about whether the manual's there or not, you know, it seems like a bait, debate either between the administration and the council. I, I think we're there, but, you know, we're, we're going in circles, and I think we need to address the, the bigger issue about, you know, having a third party, the letters on the truck, we heard the issue about $700. I mean, there's a lot of things here that impact a lot of people, so I'm just concerned that.
May I address that, Chief, sir?
Yes, yes. You, you heard one side of a story.
Sure.
And the other side of the story about the lettering is, when the responsible adult sitting at the table heard about the story, they said, stop nitpicking, flex on it, be reasonable, and nobody's gonna be made to spend $700 on a truck.
Sure.
So when you, when, when one is capable of rhetoric and hyperbole without being held accountable for the rhetoric and hyperbole, you only get half the story.
So.
Police are held accountable for what they say.
Okay.
So that's, that's the difference in, in, what we tell you is factual, and, and if one of my cops lies, they're done. If I lie, I'm done.
I understood. I, I guess my point, I'm trying to figure out what's the best for the citizens of Anarondle County, because obviously we're hearing from them.
I applaud, I applaud the search, councilman, I appreciate it.
That, that's, that's what I'm trying to do. I mean, you know, we're, we're hearing different pieces from one person versus another, some people are complaining about what's there, and then it started with the auto return. So I'm trying to figure out what, what, what are we doing for, for the citizen that gets their car towed? That's what I'm worried about.
The, the, again, this is a program, a tow program, that we've developed on how we, we have to run our, because of evidence, because of accident toes, because of people's property. We've developed this so we, it's an actual program that we have to, we have, we have to run. And, you know, I'm not sure that all, everything that's in here needs to be into, into an actual law, because it's not, then that takes away from the actual program itself. Every county, I believe except one, in the whole state have, have towing manuals and towing programs like we do. It's more, this is nothing different than any, any other county.
We're basically the only county that licenses towing. Most of them, you come to the police department, you fill an application, they say, here's a manual, do you agree to buy it, buy it? Yeah, that's, that's business, you know? As I told Mr. Grasso, if your plumber comes to your house and says, I say I want my tow here, he goes, nah, the rules say, in Maryland state law says, I can put it there, I'm just gonna put it over there. We can't operate like that. We're asking them to do something on our behalf, they need to follow the rules that we ask them. Most of what we ask isn't that arbitrary, I mean, in reference to what he was mentioning, where we don't talk to them. The May, May of 2016, we brought every tower into the police department, sat them down and said, look, here's all the rules, what is it you guys want changed? Not a soul spoke up. We told them, look, here's, we're gonna enforce everything that's in the code, read this through, tell us what you want changed. Not a soul said a word. And then when August came, when we started inspecting them, they said, well, we've never seen that law. That law was passed by this council in 1984. That four-inch lettering, nobody had realized that we were break, basically they wanted us to break the law and say, well, don't enforce it. Well, it doesn't quite work like that, because we went to them and said, if you want it changed, go to the council, we support it, but we can't just say, we've decided we're not gonna, we're not gonna enforce that law. You know, the fact that we, we have a manual that's existed for 20 years shouldn't be that big of a shocker to them. I understand Mr. Walker's goal was to introduce him to law, but I think that makes it even more cumbersome and more restrictive than what it is, which is, now it's a document that we can basically modify as we see problems, as things pop up, technology changes, like the auto return. We didn't, we don't have to go to the council to say we're going from Microsoft Windows to, you know, to XP, and that's sort of what they're saying, is you don't have the right to tell us we're changing with technology. We need to, because what we have now is paper-based, we lose cars, we lose people, we lose fees, we can't protect the citizens of the county, because half the time, we don't know, we're depending on going to them and finding receipts in shoeboxes. We're trying to step forward, you know, the receipts and the, and the processes were designed in the 70s, and they're still doing it that way, which for them works, but for us, it doesn't. Our toes have grown to a point where it's almost unmanageable if we don't change something. And because as a police officer, when this patch says tow that car, the county's liable for it. And our goal isn't to protect them, we're not running a towing charity, we're running a police department, and we're asking them to do something on our behalf. We have an obligation to make it work for the citizens and the people that we've taken their cars from.
So, so let me follow up with one question, though, with auto return, about the testimony that we did have, about they have to go into their bank accounts and they're, they're putting in number, I mean, I understand you want to go to 21st Century, but some of the stuff I, I was hearing.
But a lot of that stuff isn't, isn't, again, as the chief mentioned, you're, you're hearing one side. What they're asking for is.
I understand, I'm here to hear both sides.
Well, they're asking for, it's an electronic debit, like you would do for BG or anything else. You, you've approved the bill and you say you can, instead of me handing you a check, the way it works now is you write a check, it goes to your bank, your local bank submits on what's called an ACH transaction. They're skipping the handwritten check part. You get a, a thing online, they send you the bill, you, you approve the bill, they do a, a direct withdrawal from the same process. You don't see into the account, it's nothing more than an electronic debit like you would do for a check, for an E-check. They've also agreed that if people are that opposed to it, they can work something out. It's, again, that's a policy within the program. But as, you know, I've mentioned, Mr. Grasso and other people, it's a business decision. If I'm running a business and I don't like the parameters I've been asked to perform under, I don't interact. We probably have a thousand tow companies in the county, we have 30 that tow for the police department. The other ones have decided it's either not profitable, they don't want to deal with it, they don't want some of these people that we arrest coming to get their cars, for whatever reason. And again, it's, this isn't a charity operation, we're not here to make their business, we're here to operate our business in, in best practices. And the best practice nationwide is becoming automation. We don't have that. We have, our, our processes are stuck probably 25, 30 years ago.
Sure.
And, and, you know, when we talk about reasonable, what's reasonable to the trash company is not reasonable to, to Mr. Smith and Mr. Walker. What's reasonable to the towers may not be reasonable to the police department or to the county. We work on transparency, and right now, we don't have that.
So, so last question, what is the status of auto return? The last I was told that the contract is being, is that, can somebody tell me that?
That's a question beyond me, sir.
I think the contract was signed in, I'm not sure of the date.
The spring.
In the spring, and it's been on hold since that.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Chair.
Mr. Smith.
It's been on hold pending, pending what?
I, I don't know what the final decisions are made. I could have the CAO come down and speak to that.
So a couple of points, you know, I wasn't necessarily a fan of the auto, I was gonna say auto treating, but the.
Auto.
Auto return process. So I definitely would, would like to at least know what, how that plays into this process, because, because it's almost like it's two separate issues. The auto return, I'm not necessarily a fan of, and how they require people to, to, to process into it, got it? Understand the county's trying to make a sort of business decision on that piece. Now, when it comes to the actual toll rules, I mean, obviously, Mr. Walker has his, his sort of view, my perspective is, at least the in-state, is that there is a process whereby, a process is deliberated that's similar to other sort of, and, permanent activities that we sort of enable other companies to perform on our behalf. That's fair, and I don't think that you would do something that's, that's unfair. But we also have some sort of input into that process, whether that's a, a sort of book or the code. For me, I'm, I'm not necessarily sold on, like, like it has to be either or, as long as the in-state is we get to weigh in on it. And so, back to the initial question that was proposed earlier, would it be possible when you were designing that book, would we have that ability to have some sort of interaction as it's being designed before it's finalized and we voted down?
Yes, absolutely.
So would you hold off on this amendment till the next, would you consider holding off on this amendment till the next meeting? I know we sort of put it on the, the blotter there, I've got a, it's already there?
We can, we can, we can.
Yeah.
Just move to hold it, Peter.
Yeah.
This, I mean, I'm not sure if, if we can hold the amendment instead of the bill, which is.
Yeah, it's, we, we still got time, you know? If we get more discussion, there's nothing wrong with that. And to answer your auto return, if this law was to pass, they'd have to bring auto return in front of us, because the auto return's gonna be operating on different rules and regulations. One thing that's a concern is the rotation. What is their ability to make sure that everybody is being equally rotated, you know, through the different jurisdictions? So auto return is, is something that is going to have to be brought before this council for us to approve, that that's part of this legislation, that this doesn't happen again.
Is that true?
So I will. Yeah, you can move to hold it.
I do want to move to hold this, this amendment to the next council meeting.
I'm fine with that.
They read the amendment.
Close enough for me. Okay.
Mr. Chair.
Walker.
Before we, before we vote, I just want to, I guess, make one other statement. We've only got one last meeting to amend, to amend the bill. And you heard the administration say they'd be willing to meet with us over the, the towing manual, but in fact, this whole thing was crafted, I'm assuming, and changes included weren't, I mean, I, I wasn't consulted on it, and I don't think that the towers were either. So I would just suggest that if there's, since there's only one meeting left, if this amendment who gets, which gets held over to the next meeting happens to fail, then we're stuck with the rules as they exist in the bill as it's crafted. So just, I would just suggest that if the administration has other changes that they like to see, they might want to have a backup amendment prepared that incorporates some of the things that they have in this manual. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Okay. Mr. Peruka.
Thank you. I would like to ask Mr. Swain to consider something, because one of the things that's come to my mind during this conversation is the difference between a governmental function and a proprietary function or ministerial function, because it's, it strikes me that where I might come out on, on this question would be determined by that. So can you give that some thought, maybe we'll talk before this comes to fruition? I appreciate that, thank you.
Okay. All right, so we have a motion to hold by Mr. Smith, to hold amendment number two. I'm gonna second it. Madam Secretary, you want to call the roll on holding amendment number two?
Mr. Smith.
Aye.
Mr. Fink.
Aye.
Mr. Pruski.
Aye.
Mr. Peruka.
Aye.
Mr. Trumbauer.
Aye.
Mr. Walker.
Aye.
Mr. Grasso.
Aye.
Seven the affirmative, none of the negative. The motion to hold the vote on amendment number two is passed.
Mr. Chair, I know that amendment three is up next, but I'd like to withdraw that or hold it till the next meeting as well.
Okay, you want to hold it?
I know it's technical, but if we put the amendment on, we have to advertise, since I'd like, rather than save the.
So what do you want to do? You want to hold it?
I'd like to just withdraw it, I guess, and we can just reintroduce it.
Okay, so we're gonna draw amendment number three.
Thank you.
Done. All right, so let's see, what do we got here? All right, so we're gonna hold on it, so let me go down here, we're on 3417. All right, so we're gonna finish hearing Bill 3417 as amended on July the 3rd, 2017.
The vote for Bill 3417.
Yeah. We're gonna, we're gonna, we're gonna hold, we're gonna hold the vote on Bill 3417 until July 3rd. Yes? Okay. Mr. Trumbauer, do you have something to say?
Just clarifying, you already said it, thank you.
Okay. Madam Secretary, please read the title of Bill 5217 as amended.
Bill 5217 is amended in ordinance concerning Woodland Beach Special Community Benefit District Approval of Loan Agreement.
Okay, administration?
Mr. Chairman, members of council, Bernie Marzick, the county executive's office, with me at the table, Kinley Bray, Office of Law. 5217 obligates the county to levy a special tax on Woodland Beach community starting fiscal year 18 to repay the $764,108 loan for the purposes of renovating and expanding the clubhouse.
All right.
I would ask for your support of this bill.
Anybody, any questions for the administration? Seeing a movement, we're gonna open up the public hearing on 5217, if anybody wants to chime in. Two minutes, name and address, seeing a movement in the crowd, we'll enclose the public hearing on 5217. Madam Secretary, please read the title of Bill 5217 as amended.
Bill 5217 is amended in ordinance concerning Woodland Beach Special Community Benefit District Approval of Loan Agreement.
All right, any discussion? Seeing none here, none. Madam Secretary, please call the roll on Bill number 5217 as amended.
Mr. Smith.
Can you repeat, repeat that one last time? I'm sorry, I was.
We're calling the vote on Bill 5217.
Aye.
Mr. Fink.
Aye.
Mr. Pruski.
Aye.
Mr. Peruka.
Aye.
Mr. Trumbauer.
Aye.
Mr. Walker.
Aye.
Mr. Grasso.
Aye.
Seven the affirmative, none of the negative. Bill number 5217 is passed.
Okay. Madam Secretary, please read the title of Bill 5317.
Bill number 5317, an ordinance concerning zoning administrative hearings, hearing times.
Okay, this is another John Grasso special, let's see if we can go this one good. The concern with me is, is that a lot of times the special exceptions in the hearings for upzoning a property is done at 10:30 in the morning. I asked the council to support moving this into the evening so that the public can easily come to it, considering most of the population works during probably 8:00 to 4:00, 9:00 to 5:00, that I don't think it's fair that the population would have to take off of work to try to attend that. That doesn't mean that people haven't done that, I just think it found it more palatable to have a meeting at 7 o'clock at night. I just think it found it more palatable to have a meeting at 7:00 o'clock at night. We also have an amendment in here put in by Mr. Walker. And with that being said, administration?
Mr. Chairman, members of council with me at the table, Lori Rhodes from Plan and Zoning, Doug Holman from Administrative Hearing Officer, Greg Swain from the Office of Law. Administration continues to oppose this bill. Ms. Rhodes spoke at length about the strain of the fellow staff. Again, we feel that the current procedures for this are working well. Mr. Holman, his staff, and the Plan and Zoning staff, as well as the public, who are participating very regularly in these meetings, and we don't think this needs to change.
Let me just throw one question in here. The argument was made last time, a strain on the staff, and they'd have to work longer hours and everything. So if they know a hearing's coming up, instead of coming in at 8:00 in the morning or 8:30, whatever time it is, and they know the meeting's going to go on tonight, so why don't they just come in at 10:00 or 11:00, knowing that's what it's going to happen? So that's my question.
I understand. I mean, we plan around it. Obviously, I'm here every Monday with you all. You know, perfect example, Mr. Holman, tonight it's his wedding anniversary. Mr. Hammond last week was here until 11:00 o'clock and missed his birthday and didn't even say a word. It presents problems for staff.
Did we say happy birthday to Mr. Hammond? Happy birthday, Mr. Hammond.
So, and I'll let Ms. Rhodes, I guess, comment on the staff side, too.
Yes.
You got light? There you go.
Thank you. With the close to 600,000 residents in Anarundel County that we try to serve with excellent customer service, I think that any additional evening hearings affects negatively impacts morale. I pride my staff with the quality of customer service that they provide, the quality of work that they put into their staff reports. Also, to let you know that the administrative hearing is the first leg of the judicial process for these applications. And unlike any other court, they're not changing their hours for one or two individuals that may have to take off from work. It's part of the process. It's the nature of the process. So again, I would request that the council do not support this bill. It will affect my staff.
Mr. Walker, do you want to chime in?
No, sir. My amendment's up, I'll...
All right, so we're going to turn around and let's see, what do we got here? We already have...
Already had the public hearing.
Yeah, we had the public hearing. It's not down here again. Okay. All right, with that being said, there's any other discussion? All right, there's an amendment, and that's amendment number one. Madam Secretary, please read the title of Bill 5317 once again.
Bill 5317, an ordinance concerning zoning administrative hearings, hearing times.
Any discussion? Seeing none, Madam Secretary, please read amendment number one.
Amendment number one, this amendment removes the requirement for evening hours on special exceptions and changes the time that hearings for zoning shall begin to 6:00 p.m.
Move to adopt. And I'll second it. Mr. Walker, this is yours.
Thank you. Mr. Chair, this is something that I guess was a combination of testimony from the last meeting that we had in the hearing, as well as trying to shift the time back an hour so that the potential hearings don't go too late. Thank you.
Fair enough.
Gets rid of special.
Did you want to say something?
Yeah, it does get rid of special exceptions. I apologize. That was the piece that I mentioned. It was from the public hearing testimony that...
Fair enough. Administration, do you want to chime in on that?
I think, you know, this amendment, in our opinion, makes, you know, a bad bill better, but we still are opposed to the bill, so...
Yes.
Okay. Fair enough. You know what? I kind of look at it this way, Mr. Marsick. I'm going to chop my hat off to Mr. Walker because, again, you know, this is a group effort, I think, and that, you know, there's one bill that is always done by one person and passes, and sometimes not the best if it's a put-together effort of everybody. So it's kind of like the halfway of the road because, I mean, I said, I'm happy with 7:00 and I wasn't happy with this, this, and this, but I think I give Mr. Walker, you know, a hat on this one because he came back at a less time and he took away the special exception thing. And so, as you say, makes a bad bill better. So I'm okay with it.
Less vote, Mr. Chair.
Okay. With that being said, Madam Secretary, you want to please call the roll on amendment number one?
Mr. Smith?
Aye.
Mr. Fink?
Aye.
Mr. Pouski?
Aye.
Mr. Peruca?
Aye.
Mr. Trumbauer?
Aye.
Mr. Walker?
Aye.
Mr. Grasso?
Aye.
Seven the affirmative, none of the negative. Amendment number one is adopted.
Okay, with that being said, Bill 5317 as amended will be heard on July 3rd, 2017. Coming down the homestretch here. Madam Secretary, please read the title of Bill 5617.
Bill 5617, an emergency ordinance concerning current expense budget, fourth quarter fund transfer, and supplementary appropriations.
Administration?
Mr. Chairman, members of council, Bernie Marsick, County Executive's Office, with me at the table, Stephen Teroux from Budget Office, Greg Swain from the Office of Law. 5617 makes multiple fund transfers, enclosing out the current fiscal year. First is to transfer 2.7 million for various departments, including police, recreation, and parks, and plan and zoning. And second is the $5 million transfer to the Board of Ed Health Fund. We'll be offering amendment at the appropriate time.
Mr. Chairman?
Mr. Chair?
Oh, we've got a double team. I'm going to start off with the left, if you don't mind. Mr. Pouski?
Yes. With that being said, I want to disclose that my spouse is a member of the Board of Education, and I have to, for ethics reasons, to just make that public and help with this bill. With that being said, thank you.
That being said. Mr. Trumbauer?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. First, I want to thank the auditor for putting together the blue letter that goes through all of these changes. Thank you for doing that. I did review them. And secondly, I'd like to congratulate the State's Attorney's Office for not asking for a transfer because I think several of us specifically requested that they not come in for a fourth quarter transfer, and they didn't. So I like to acknowledge good effort where it is. So thank you, Mr. Chair.
With that being said. All right, anybody else? All right, so we're going to open up the public hearing on 5617. Anybody want to chime in? Say no movement in the crowd. We're going to close the public hearing on 5617. Madam Secretary, please read the title of Bill 5617.
Bill number 5617, an emergency ordinance concerning current expense budget, fourth quarter fund transfer, and supplementary appropriations.
All right, very good. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, we have an amendment. Madam Secretary, please read amendment number one.
This amendment corrects the amount of a transfer of appropriation of funds from CAO grants, contributions, and other to the Office of Budget Personnel Services, provides for a transfer of appropriation of funds from the CAO grants, contributions, and other to the Office of Planning and Zoning Development Personal Services, the Orphans Court, Business and Travel, and the Department of Aging Contractual Services. Corrects the amount of a supplementary appropriation of funds from the Recreation and Parks Child Care Fund Unappropriated Fund Balance to the Recreation and Parks Child Care Fund Personal Services, and provides for supplementary appropriation of funds from the Recreation and Parks Child Care Fund Unappropriated Fund Balance to the Recreation and Parks Child Care Fund Contractual Services and Business and Travel.
Move to adopt.
Second.
All right. Any discussion? Hearing none, Madam Secretary, please call the roll on amendment number one.
Mr. Smith?
Aye.
Mr. Fink?
Aye.
Mr. Pouski?
Aye.
Mr. Peruca?
Aye.
Mr. Trumbauer?
Aye.
Mr. Walker?
Aye.
Mr. Grasso?
Aye.
Seven the affirmative, none of the negative. Amendment number one is adopted.
Okay, this ought to get somebody kicking. This is an emergency ordinance and should be voted on tonight. Madam Secretary, please call the roll on Bill number 50...
Mr. Chair?
I want to ask a question. I just did a quick calculation of the difference that's in the top line there, the 2,707 and the 2,982, and I got 275. And down, and I think it's off from the total, and you can correct me if I'm wrong. The Business and Travel on the last, the last change, 4,600, is in not an even thousand? We had thought that number was going to be 5,000. Is that a mistake? I'll give you a minute to look at it.
Can we, Mr. Chair, can we hold the bill till the end of the meeting?
We can do that also. Address the question.
Yeah, yeah, but I'm just saying, I don't want to put them on the spot and make them break out their calculators right now.
So let's, they can go ahead and do their calculator thing. If you just want to hold, you need the time, say something, Mr. Marsick.
Madam Auditor, Stephen Teroux from Budget Office, you're addressing the $4,600 in the Child Care Fund, correct?
Oh, okay, that's in the Child Care Fund.
Yeah, that has nothing to do with the general fund CAO contribution.
Okay, then, then I'm going to take a few minutes and make sure this all adds up.
All right, so let's take a motion to hold 5617 towards the end. Got a second?
Aye.
All right. Madam Secretary, please call the roll to hold 5617 towards the end as amended.
Mr. Smith?
Yeah, we're holding the bill. We're just holding the vote.
We're just holding it to get the rest of this out of the way.
Mr. Fink? Mr. Pouski?
Aye.
Mr. Peruca?
Aye.
Mr. Trumbauer?
Aye.
Mr. Walker?
Aye.
Mr. Grasso?
Aye.
Seven the affirmative, none of the negative. The motion to table the vote on Bill 5617 to the end of the meeting is passed.
All right. Madam Secretary, please read the title of Bill 5717.
Bill 5717, an emergency ordinance concerning current expense budget, Board of Education, supplementary appropriation, and transfer of funds.
All right. Administration?
Mr. Chairman, members of council, with me at the table, Matt Samsky from Anarundel County Public Schools, Alex Shagnovich from Anarundel County Public Schools, Greg Swain from the Office of Law. Bill 5717 appropriates over $16 million to the Board of Ed. This $16 million includes $5 million from the county for the health insurance, which was removed from the general fund in the prior bill. Actually, we're going to have to hold this bill, too, I guess. No, I guess, no, because it's going to be signed. Never mind. And the Board of Ed is here to speak on the specifics if you have questions in the council.
Mr. Chair?
Mr. Trumbauer?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Mr. Shagnovich, thanks for coming. Is there anything in this bill that is outside of what was contemplated when we talked about the various fixes in the budget process, or is this compatible with what was relayed all along?
For the record, Alex Shagnovich, Chief Operating Officer, this does comport with those discussions. As Mr. Marsick indicated, it facilitates a transfer of the $5 million as part of the fourth quarter NFY 17 from the CAO contingency account to the Board Self-Insurance Fund. And then if you take a look at line 44 on page two of your bill, you'll see in total $8.3 million is being shifted over into the fixed charges category. So $5 million from the county makes up a significant portion of that, and then there's additional monies that the board has identified as well to continue to put into the fixed charges. So it does comport with those prior conversations and allows us to close the fiscal year, that being 17, both balanced overall, categorically balanced, and on the positive side in the self-insurance fund.
Mr. Chair?
Mr. Trumbauer?
Thank you, Mr. Shagnovich, but just to reiterate, despite that good news, it's your opinion, and I believe the auditor's opinion as well, that we will still have more work to do next year to close the actual structural deficit in that fund. Is that correct?
Yes, sir. I think everybody acknowledges it's a multiple-year strategy. So this is yet another inroad towards addressing that permanent fix, but this is not the one singular silver bullet that's required.
I didn't want anyone to construe your remarks to mean we didn't have to worry about the health insurance by next year, that's all. Thank you.
All right. Did you want to chime in on this, Madam Auditor?
Yes, I have a question I wanted to get on the record. This bill uses $8 million of appropriations in certain line items and uses them for other purposes. And in addition to that, I wanted to get on the record that you still believe that on top of that $8 million, you're going to find $15 million of savings somewhere else in your budget to be able to close out your year with a $15 million positive fund balance to roll into next year.
That's correct.
Okay. I just wanted to get it on the record. Thank you.
Mr. Pouski?
Mr. Chairman, just the same disclosure, as I said earlier, my spouse is a employee of the Board of Education. I want to make sure it's on the record. Thank you.
Okay. With that being said, we're going to open up the public hearing on 5717. Anybody want to chime in? How you doing again, Ms. Johnson? Name and address, please, in two minutes. I'm going to put you on live. You're live. Good.
Julie Johnson, PO Box 6634, Annapolis, Maryland. I would like to thank you for the improved quality of this annual emergency ordinance to transfer funds. This is significantly more clear or more transparent, at least it specifies particular numbers, and that's definitely an improvement. I would like to remind you that I testified before, or at the last hearing, related to the resolution, that my department chairman, and I've testified about this before, my department chairman refused to purchase textbooks for my students. And you know that she said, "Books? Books? Books? You want books for your students? You want books for your students? You buy them yourself out of your own money." And then there were, which is contrary to the law, of course. In addition to that, she boasted about the fact that even though the policy was that materials of instruction such as textbooks and dissection specimens, and I understand you guys probably don't get all excited about having a fetal pig to dissect, and you really don't care if it costs, you know, that extra amount of money when it's injected with pink latex into the arteries and blue latex into the veins. But biology teachers think that this is real luxury. So she said, "I ordered enough fetal pigs, sharks, frogs, fish, for every kid in school to have four years' worth of them." And I made an arrangement with the vendor that he is not going to deliver those things. He's going to deliver a phase-contrast microscope. And of course, it turned out that that microscope was only to be used by certain specific students, and most of the students and faculty members in the school would never see it, much less put their hands on it. I take a particular interest in the large amount of money that goes into the school system. I support a lot of it, but I also urge...
Please summarize, Ms. Johnson.
Thank you. The point is, I urge real vigilance because part of this was a very important part of discriminating against my students. Black or white, no books. Black or white, no dissection specimens, and not only my students, but others. Thank you.
You're welcome, dear. Okay. With that being said, anybody else? We're going to close the public hearing on 5717. Say no movement in the crowd. Madam Secretary, please call the roll on Bill number, excuse me. Madam Secretary, please read the title of Bill 5717.
Bill 5717, an emergency ordinance concerning current expense budget, Board of Education, supplementary appropriation, and transfers of funds.
Any discussion? Seeing no movement. Madam Secretary, please call the roll on Bill 5717.
Mr. Smith?
Aye.
Mr. Fink?
Aye.
Mr. Pouski?
Aye.
Mr. Peruca?
Aye.
Mr. Trumbauer?
Aye.
Mr. Walker?
Aye.
Mr. Grasso?
Aye.
Seven the affirmative, none of the negative. Bill number 5717 is passed.
Madam Secretary, please read the title of Bill 5817.
Bill number 5817, an ordinance concerning personnel classified service exempt service.
Administration?
Mr. Chairman, members of council, Bernie Marsick, County Executive's Office, with me at the table, Kelly Lovett from the Office of Law, and the Rhodes from Personnel. Bill 5817 implements all 12 union contract pay packages for the fiscal year 2018, as well as the pay package approved in the fiscal year 18 budget for all non-rep employees, exempt employees, employees of the State's Attorney's Office, Circuit Court, and soil conservation. For the sake of brevity, I was not going to go through all the changes unless council would want me to go through all the changes.
No, everybody's happy is what it sounds like to me, right? That's what I like. Okay, anybody want to open up the public hearing on 5817? You know, Ms. Johnson, I think I'm going to get you a special seat right up there with your name on it. I know you want the exercise, but we're going to have you a seat right in front. Name and address, please.
Julie Johnson, PO Box 6634, Annapolis, Maryland. Mr. Chairman, and members of the council, I was in a sandwich shop, and there were several people who seemed to have been former firefighters or EMTs or something from Anarundel County, and the gist of the conversation came to part of the reason they were no longer affiliated or interested in being in Anarundel County. And this was a couple of years ago, was they said you had to be a firefighter for 10 years, you know, at entry level, had to work for 10 years before they earned as much as you guys do in your part-time jobs. Now, this was informal. I don't know whether it was accurate and inaccurate. I drafted some letters to request the documentation, and I can't remember now whether I sent those emails or not, but I am interested in finding out what was the prior, the old contract for how much firefighters made.